Good morning, everybody.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is standing as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Need to request an approval for the agenda. Before we do that, approximately at say nine, 10 or so, we'll have an executive session personnel. So we can add that in there and give a motion.
Make motion to approve the agenda with the executive session change at 19:00.
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so we got that. We also gonna need a request for approval of prior meetings. If we read them, looked over, seen anything changed in them, now's the time to do it. So if not, I need a motion for that.
Mr. Vice Chair, there were just a few changes to the agenda recently. We added one thing to Clayton at the end of his, and we just changed the AM to a PM on Andrea Jean. So very clear of that.
That's good. That's what I said last time. All right, so if none, anything else? Could we have a motion for approval of prior meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the prior meeting minutes from 7:01, 2025, and 7:14, 2025.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now we got the accounts payable, and we got a code here. Added vouchers in amount of $497,990.57. Is that saying correct there? All right, first, is that three of your figures? Yeah, I'll use my favorites if you need it.
I apologize.
No, you got it. You're good.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the total vouchers and payroll liabilities in amount of $497,992.57.
Miss, Mr. Chairman, excuse me. So I don't know who put me in there for reimbursement, but I don't want that. I want that stricken. I don't know who did it. I didn't for reimbursement for the Board of County Commissioners meal when Jeremiah was here.
What's that total?
Two oh five seventy.
Two oh five seventy two?
Yeah.
That's something we all.
Well, I'm in agreement with it because I didn't ask for it. Who did? Whoever did? Yeah, well.
I guess we'll accept that. So any, anything else? Any corrections or anything on the payroll? I mean, the accounts payable? We're gonna need somebody to get a look. So you got it?
Yes, I'll ask Elizabeth.
Chairman, I amend my motion to approve the accounts payable minus the one voucher. The new total is four ninety seven, seven eighty six, eighty five.
Oh, can you get a second on that?
Oh, yeah, I can second that now.
Any discussion or any more discussion? All right, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Any opposed? So now we've got that out of the way. So last night, 5:30, we went over the budget. The final's gonna be. Now's our time to pass that. So I think all just got a copy of it. Anybody out there want to see it? Grab quick the copy before we proceed. Anybody? If not, so we'll need a motion to accept the, 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 the years.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve resolution two five dash one zero zero four nine seven B to provide income necessary to finance the 2026 budget.
It's four nine seven. I've got four nine six in front of me. I'm missing four nine seven. Are they the same?
So four nine six is the second resolution that we have to pass when we allocate out the line items to individuals. So four nine seven B is just to provide the income necessary to finance the budget. Four nine six is the resolution for the appropriations of the budget.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that anywhere? Want this? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Four zero one.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve resolution two five one zero zero four nine six B on the appropriations of the finances to the different departments.
All right, double second there. Second on that. Any discussion on appropriations resolution? If not, I'll ask for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So pass four zero nine seven. All right, so.
Chairman, we want to do a quick signature on those so that Jessica can get the bills paid.
So his name's printed under there. That can be changed. Jessica, was his name's on there, printed on there. Does it make any difference if my name's above it?
I apologize. I should have asked Clayton since Chairman Bernard is not present. His, he was already printed on there as the chairman to sign the budget.
You can, we can either reprint it, or you can just sign and then just put your bias.
Sign the second one?
Um, yes. The resolution you provided is necessary. All of you sign that one.
Yeah, if you want. Clayton, what's our executive session number? Sixteen four four oh five. Okay, it's been requested. We have a short executive session on personnel. And somebody can make that motion.
Make motion to go into executive section for personnel sixteen four four oh five A two.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's for motion, Jessica, personnel.
I'd like to make a motion to allow Andrea with the HR department to pursue employment offer for our planning and zoning department head.
Second.
My second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Alright.
All opposed? Pass four to zero. Alright. We've got Billy paid road and bridge update on activities.
It's got my activity list. We're, uh, just summertime, we're light roads. Maybe what we're trying to do. Coal maintenance, then they had to replace some coalwards, they caved in. Hauling the little gravel, fixing spat spots. Is there any question on what our activities are?
I see you did the one down at the fire training center.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering, I mean, that firms that's ground up so much, can you do that inside the fire training facility where they had so much issue with the ground? Could you mag that?
Um.
Gain anything there where it shed water better?
You know, we, we kind of bladed a little bit in there because we were turning around, yeah, because when we cleaned that ditch, you know, we had to throw it up on the road, so the road was, had a lot of mud, so we just ran some crush down through there. The fire tower, I mean, we just have to bring in base, you know, to get something that you wouldn't want to. Yeah, before, because that stuff that's in there is just so, it's just muck, you know, it's just that seal clay. If we mag it, it wouldn't, it, I don't know if it'd ever dry.
They might not be stand up.
Yeah, exactly.
Extra training.
Exactly.
Okay, so South Cottler, what about, did you get it all?
Got it, got it, yeah, that 129 road got it all done. Now we're just blading our way out. For McDougal, I got a haul a little bit on the hill there to kind of get it better shaped than it is, but yeah, it turned out really nice. Um, the one thing I did, I went, uh, the Big Piney Airport, guys asked me to come look up there, they have a, they have a runway that, that
Crosswind.
For the crosswinds. And we put that in, oh, like fifteen years ago. And it's back to where the sagebrush is growing and they use it quite a bit. But it's starting to get like this much sagebrush and that, so it's kind of, I don't know if I'd want to try it.
A little dangerous.
So, they were asking if, and I said I'd have to come to you guys, they would like me to blade it and bring in some material and build it up a little bit and then maybe mag it. It would take about eight thousand yards of material. It, you know, four thousand gallons of mag. Couple, you know. It's basically back to natural right now because nothing's been touched, but when then winds are blowing, they have to use that. And if they have, you know, and they're, they're still using it, they used it the other day, I guess the winds were blowing real bad, but it is going to wreck a plane because it's, it, you know, it's got this much sagebrush and everything, but that's what it would cost.
Is that, pardon me, a dollar amount is what I heard the?
You would, the road and bridge do it, so, you know, I'd pull everything out of our pit, so, but it'd take, it'd take, take about six thousand pit run, five to six thousand pit run and a couple thousand of crush.
Which would be to come out of, come out of here, where would it come out?
Yeah, come out of here.
Just stand us on that.
It's good, yeah, it's good a lot. Yeah.
So it's got something, you got time, you could work again or?
They're in no, like, no, like, real hurry, you know, I, I could get it done for winter, but I told them I'd ask it.
So, so I still didn't hear a dollar about, amount, about approximation, but I know.
Our, you know, our, if, if we bought the material, you know, you would be, you know, you would be seven, seventeen to twenty bucks a, a yard and crush and then pit run you'd probably be six, seven bucks. But, you know, coming out of our pit, you know, we're into it, you know, we make our crush right now, we make our crush for about eight bucks a ton and then our, you know, our, our pit runs are done, so, I mean, I could, I could put down what it's, it, you know, it's going to be.
Fifty, sixty thousand.
Yeah, yeah. And then, you know, for us doing it, you're probably, you're probably another for the blade and water truck or roller, you know, you're, you're going to be into another twenty-five, if you, you know, thousand.
So would you have to request a budget? Change, Billy?
Yeah, you know, it's in my operation, I don't, I don't think it would, I, I think we'd be fine. I mean, it's, you know, you know, I always, I always, because there's always stuff I don't get to because of, you know, that I plan that I don't get, so I think I'd be fine.
So you'd just be replacing it with something, something else that you didn't get to?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I think, from my opinion, Billy knows his budget, if he thinks he can make it happen and, and not have to do a budget transfer of anything, go for it.
Yeah, we want.
And I think it'd be a good, you know, safety, safety figures in there, so horizontal serve is fine. Especially with as much training as they're doing, God, they got little planes up all the time with.
Well, when, when I was up there, I was up there for about, oh, two hours and I couldn't believe the planes that were landing, you know, they're starting to sell a lot of fuel and stuff, I mean, there, there was probably eight planes that landed, you know, some were training, but yeah, I was, I was amazed. Alrighty. As Mike, we were talking, the, we're starting to get a lot of complaints about the bike pass, where the roads are coming up and some of them bumpments on the bridges and stuff, people are, so we're just seeing what we should do.
Sorry, not this year.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think, I mean, to start with, we're, we're, we're there with the MOU, I think that's something that we need to get done with the town, just, they've approved these plans, basically the agreement references these and says, you know, once this is, once these, um, construction projects are completed, the town takes over maintenance. So that gives you the surety that, you know, you can invest in it and then turn it over, that can happen soon. And beyond that, it's just a matter of budgeting, you know, so obviously it's not in this year's budget, but they're, Billy's getting a lot of calls on it, so just, I guess, wanted me to be here to go over any questions you guys might have.
So is it kind of the same sections that most of the calls are about? I mean, what I see looks good, so I'm not on it.
Even lane, a lot of routes are coming up, I don't know if we could, I guess that's on the mask, I don't know, and then, you know, split diamond, of course, that one, um, just where the roads are coming in, then like the way that bridge down there by Shelter Park has a bad kind of, it's, you hit it, you can, on a bike, it's kind of real bad. Mainly it's the roots, kind of even lane one, the roots kind of took over, it's really, it's bad, people are saying they're tripping on them, you know, and they, they don't feel safe on their bikes, I don't, I don't know if we
So where at on even lane, those are the ditch along most of that, so where's the roots coming from on that?
I think just from them willows there, you know.
Or they turn into a school or something, that's where.
Right there, that's where, and I, they, they are bad right there, I mean, they, it's, it's, I mean, I got that stuff going on at the golf course, I'm like, you know, it's, but the only way to fix it is you just, you got to tear them all the way out and put that root guard in there and redo it, I, I mean, I don't know if, till we can fix them, I don't know if you could just go and rip them out, you know what I mean, you know what I mean, I I don't know.
Seaman lane fall within town limits?
No.
That's hard.
So that's going to be just ours?
Yep.
The other ones are pretty much in the town.
Yeah, the ones that we were focused on, really, the, the worst ones were the ones in town, town limits, so.
I, I still say that this year we get the MOU signed, so we have that option, don't put ourselves under any timeline to have it done before it happens and see what happens next year with funding. You just keep getting some calls, Billy.
Good, yeah, you know, they're, they started saying this, you know, the safety thing, I didn't know if, if you want to just go and knock that down, you know what I mean, they're going to come right back, but.
So on the bridge, I'm curious, so is it where it goes right?
Yeah, it's where the, where the pavement goes to the, and I think, I looked, I went down there yesterday afternoon because I got a call about that, and I, I mean, I think I could take some cold mix, maybe I can get under there and maybe make it smoother where it's not such a, it, it's just kind of a gap, so the, you
Some kids like it, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And then the, the root guards, you know, I, you know, people are saying they're tripping, but they're not walk around it, I get, you know, I, I don't know what to say.
Paint orange, just get some orange spray paint, her roots just.
Yeah. And the roots are bad this year, they're, they're coming up through a lot of stuff, so.
So, I guess, everybody agrees with Sam, we'll just get that sign and then we'll look into next year, see what happens there, do the best we can, right?
Yeah, that's right. Then.
Yeah, I just got a couple of project updates, industrial sites moving on along, and start pouring Valley Pan next week, they'll be building the road up. Starting tomorrow with the pit run, I'm going to put fabric down to cover up that nasty clay that's out there and then import pit run it, cover it with crushed base, but things moving right along out there. And then the other thing I got is I did the annual report for the landfill. Earlier this month, our totals were down from last year, pretty significant on the C and Ds, you can see, but holding pretty, pretty average with years past. And right now we got about five and a half years left on that existing cell. But talking to Billy, the way the cell's designed now is it's a constant slope of two percent across the top. So we're looking to make it flat and then just crown it at five percent and that might get us another three years out of it. So, we're going to put it together for the DQ and see if they go for it, and, I mean, we're just putting off the inevitable, doing that line cell, but I think it's worth, worth an attempt to get an extra couple of years out of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just for lack of ability.
That's probably alright, you know. Other than that, everything else going smooth, outer county was down a little bit, but that's just how it goes.
Yeah, last winter, the C and D almost stopped, I mean, it was really, it's, it's coming in right now, though, it's busy.
Lots of trees, where's, all them people cutting all the trees, huh? Been out there a couple times, I mean, it's just.
Tons of trees.
A lot of live, live aspen.
Yeah, I don't know where they're coming.
Yeah, this, Mr. Vice Chairman, I got a bit, so I do have one question. And I know you guys can answer it. So when I go back here and look at accounts payable, that ugly word miscellaneous projects, what all does that include? It has to include something, it just can't, what is miscellaneous?
A lot of it's the stuff I hire and do, like, um, like if I'm, like, so I just know where I'm at, like on a lot of survey and, and like if I'm blading somewhere or somewhere, if I'm putting in a fence post, you know, that's got tore down or whatever, I'll have them run out and, and survey and stake it for me and stuff like, it's so mainly, and I try to, I try to, in the, I don't know if it's getting, I, on the invoice, I'll try to write down.
Well, that's, I'm just curious because it could be anything.
Yeah.
And so if, you know, not, not a big deal, but I'd kind of like to know.
Yeah, it's, it's normally that, the little stuff I have them do all the time, and I try to write, you know, like, where, what road we, you know, and I'll put survey and stuff like that on the invoice.
Okay, fair enough.
When we send the invoice out, Commissioner, we, we put a description of what those certain projects were, and I know it's not been popular, so we try not to use it unless it's just a one-off, um, just something for that Billy request needs, so we do put a description of exactly what, what, what we did for that month, under those.
Under, under the miscellaneous.
Yeah, yeah, and on our invoice to the county, and I don't know, it seems to me like you never see that.
Yeah, and I, I don't, maybe somebody else does, and I don't, I don't like to go in and say, hey, pull this invoice up, let's look, see what it is. But on the miscellaneous account, because everything else you guys do tells you exactly what it is, and so if it's in the future, if it
Yeah.
If it's not too big a deal, it just lets you know, or lets at least me know.
You know, road and bridge.
Mr. Vice Chair. Agree, I will, I will see if there's room to, when it's miscellaneous, just do a slash and a short description that will print out for you.
Okay, I appreciate that, and if it's too big a hassle, I'll hassle these guys here and then they can. Thank you.
Alright, that's. I got one quick update for you, um, we're moving along on that Jade Street project, so, uh, last week we were able to get the, the water service out to that parcel Y, Jade Street, so the crosses in, that was the, the hard part, just dealing with groundwater. The only other part that's left is just to put that doghouse manhole in and stub out the sewer service for parcel Y, and I would guess that happens here in the next couple of weeks, and it's pretty shallow, so it won't be a big deal, but just an update for you, that's moving along.
We still staying on budget on that?
Yeah.
Thanks, Mike.
Only other thing I got is, I was going to, been working with Andrea about, um, like, part-time, full-time, and, and it's, you're getting, I'm getting where I can't, I, I, I get good guys, but on the, and Andrea put numbers, some numbers together for me, um, I got like, I can't get part-time guys, and so I'm allocated six guys for road and bridge, I do got three, but two out of the three, one's been there over a year and a half, and the other one's been there six months, and, you know, they, they're, they were trying to hold off to wait till somebody retires or quit, but I, I just don't have that, so I'm gonna, I'm going to end up losing these guys, and so, I don't know if you want to come up? Talk, show these numbers. Like, I just hate to lose, because they, they, you know, they, they don't get no benefits or anything, and what, what I'm running into at the part-time is I've been advertising since March, and I just don't get anybody, because when they come, a lot of them have to have, have to show some sort of benefits for my child support, stuff like that, so I can't, I can't get them. So I'm pretty lucky in the winter, because I have three guys that do different jobs in the summer to come back and help plow snow in the winter, so I'm good there, and like, right now I got three, just I got one finally hired yesterday, so I only had two, but the, the two that have hung in there are, they're, they're, they're going to leave me, because they, they, they can't hang, they can't hang out anymore. So, I don't know if there's in, in the future or whatever, me and Andrea were talking, maybe I can eliminate some of my part-time and add the monies about, you know, tell them about that.
So, what I did is I just, just so you know, because his part-time people can only work one thousand five hundred and sixty hours versus the two thousand and eighty, otherwise they'll, we'd have to pay him the benefits, and that's in a year, and so his overtime for twenty twenty-four was uh, one hundred thirty-three thousand, but it's already at ninety-nine now, so he's looking at almost fifty percent increase this year if it continues, so it would help in overtime to be able to work those, those extra five hundred and twenty hours, um, if they were full-time, but the other piece that I had is I ran how much it would be for benefits, and, um, I did it at an L three, just because it's kind of in the mid of what his employees are at right now, and it would be an extra twenty-one thousand a year to make them full-time.
But I budget for, to have these extra guys, and I'm never using that, because I can't ever get
Yeah.
The guys. So basically with.
And it would help with the, it would decrease overtime.
My overtime. So that's something I just wanted you guys to think.
What would you like to have?
Well, I, I, I hate to lose, you know, especially. The one guy has been there a year and a half and he's, and normally, you know, normally it's about a year wait normally that somebody will retire or, or, or leave, move. Uh, very seldom they quit, but, um. It's, it's, you know, it's, it's hard to, and what, here's another thing, it's hard for me, I don't. Like, them guys I, I don't do a lot of the training with, because I don't want to spend the money, you know, to get them certified, MSHA and all that, and all the stuff we have to do. Um, because it's, you know, just send them down the road. So, um. But, I mean, he's been here a year and a half and he's, you know, he can do anything. He can run all the, you know, and it's, it's hard to, hard to lose him, because. It's. Just another good guy gone. And it's hard, it's, I'm, I'm, I'm having a problem finding good guys. So. That, that's the thing that's hard about not being able, and, you know, he's got kids too, so he's, he's finally got to try to. Give, you know, some benefits, stuff like that. So, I'm just thinking maybe, you know, we're. Help, if, if, instead of having, I just can't get the part-time, so I don't know if, I just, I basically just need some more guys is what, you know. Especially just in the, you know, and I don't need a bunch, but I mean, it. Like, right now, it's been, you know, this tough time. I, I used to be able to fill part-time real easy. But I, I don't, you know, and then, and then, so it takes, you know, you just, just short guys. So it's. I mean, I might be even shorter, but I just thought if I could get a couple more, you know, take my part-time and then. Get that all together, then I would, you know, at least I know I have two more guys.
So when's these two possibly home? And they might stay? I mean, will they, think they'll leave soon, or what kind of time are you on?
They're, I'm not under any, they're, I mean, they're, they're just, they just told me that they're, you know, they gotta start trying to. Find something with benefits, you know, so. I know, it could be, tomorrow could be. You know, three months, I don't know. So.
So that 33,000 in overtime, what kind of hour number is that? Thousand dollar figure?
That was. The 133, sorry, it was 2832, so 2,830 hours.
And, and so you want to take. Part guy, a part-time guy, put him on full-time, so.
Yeah, and they just eliminate some of the.
Overtime?
Because I, yeah, eliminate overtime and eliminate some of my part-time. You know, because I'm not filling them anyway.
You gain a thousand hours. You'd cut a thousand hours in overtime, putting those on.
Yeah.
We, we talked about three part-time down to two full-time.
Yeah. Or at least one. I mean, if I could give one, I mean, but I, yeah, two would be awesome.
So, so one's been there a year and a half.
Yeah.
And that, about a half year, six months, you said. And you want to take, put both of them on full-time?
I would like to, yeah.
And so the differential, explain that, Andrea, again, the differential between that would be.
Well, first of all, they each be able to work 520 more hours in the year, which would help reduce overtime for other guys, but, um. Also, taking, I don't know how much is budgeted for each part-time person. I guess I should have asked.
We, we, we budge 20, because we just pay them flat $25.
Yeah, but whatever that is, I haven't done the math to see what that is a year, but. If you reduce one of those, I'm assuming it would cover. The benefits for two.
So, so, so both these, both these guys would go, if they went from part-time to full-time, but they going under the same salary?
It would be.
Or, or they're gonna be a differential in the steps because of the year and a half versus a half? Or how is that gonna work?
Well, the. They're, they, they're gonna get a raise no matter what, because.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but I'm just.
The, the one guy, the one guy I'd like to, the other one's only been there six months, so I, you know, I, I, I would start him at one. The other, the guy that's been there a year and a half. I mean, he's never got a raise, or whether I'd probably start him in an L2.
So that's a difference of $2 an hour and $3.50 an hour.
Yeah.
Not that much.
Yeah.
They can live on that, think?
They're living on it.
Yeah, they're living on much.
They're living.
They may be picking up money somewhere else too, you know.
Yeah. No, they, they say they, you know, they, they say they can. I mean, they'd love, they, they've been trying to hold out to go full-time.
If each one of them could have 500 hours overtime for you, I don't know if that's possible or not, but, I mean, that, that savings alone offsets your 21,000 in. Benefits by 2,700 bucks.
Well, seeing why the overtime is, I used to be able to fill them, and then that kept the overtime down, but I haven't been able to fill them. So, then, the, you know, that just makes us do more overtime. Just something I want you guys to think about.
So, and did, and bear with me, because I can't remember whether you, did you include in your budget this coming year to offset some of this?
No, I didn't, because I, I'm just. I just been talking with her, just because I know they're telling me they're, you know, leaving, so I was talking with Andrea about. Something we could maybe work to, and if we don't do it now, I mean, it, it is what it is, but I, I see this is gonna be a problem. Occurring into the future.
But he is budgeted for the part-time people, so you eliminated one, that would help offset.
Yeah, so I, I could cover one.
And then that makes the other guy under. Yeah, I know how that works. Not good sometimes. He might go from one part-time to no part-time when you hire just one full-time.
Yeah. Yeah.
Sort of how it works in, in the real world. That's just the way it is.
My simple math here, it looks like it's cheaper to put them on full-time than what you're doing.
Yeah, well, it used to work out really well, because, you know, you, you. Seem like you could fill it, but you just can't, I, you just can't fill it. I mean, I talked with a lot of contractors, like, well, I'm the same issue.
If you put them on full-time, do you think you'd see a change in your overtime?
Well, yeah, because, because. What happens is when I don't have them, you know, then we, we still got, yeah, so, so, yeah, then, you know, and then like, like. Right now, I can't work them. You know, I have to, I have to watch their hours.
So what's the morale where your other guys happen to work the extra overtime? Do they love it or get tired of it, or?
You know, it's, it's kind of a mixed bag. I, I, I don't got as many that want to do it as much, you know? Um, but, I mean, they will think, if we're in a project, stuff like that, but. Not. Not as, not as much as, you know. And we try, and I try not to do as much, as much overtime, so. Mainly when we get overtime is just emergencies, you know, this snowplowing, you're always gonna have it there. Um. And then, and then basically covering vacation and stuff, when I got so many guys gone, you know, a lot of times it'll, some of the other guys have to. Especially like my mag truck drivers and stuff like that, you know, they'll, they'll have to. Will be a guy down, so they'll have to work a little later to get everything treated, stuff like that. It's just, just, you know.
So the one, let, let me get this straight then. The one part-time guy, by taking away some overtime, you can. That offsets. So the, so now we're looking at the second guy. That's where, that's where I think the issue is.
Yeah.
So, so let me ask this part then. So we've still got a little left. Did you have those numbers? We still got a little left in overtime savings, right?
Hopefully.
Yeah, well, you said we did. That's all I'm going on.
Yeah.
So, so. So through the, through the course of the year, if you were to hire the second guy. I have to believe someplace in your budget, you could shave enough off of something.
Oh, yeah.
To offset, so that, to offset the second individual, so in fact. The total budgets could still stay the way it was presented.
Third part-time position would help with that.
Yeah.
Whatever it's funded for.
Because we're gonna, because we're gonna, we're gonna drop three part-time than I budgeted four.
Well, I don't know about everybody else, but I can tell you, I like county roads in Southern County. And if. You can figure out how to do it, I, I'd say.
Well, and it's hell if a guy's been there a year and a half and he's a good hand. He's basically a full-time hand.
Yeah.
Wait it out, you know, until someone retires and that, I just, I just, I don't have that.
That's a good problem.
That's a good problem, yes.
Any comment?
Oh, I'd, I'd say, yeah, Billy, handle, handle your business. What you need to do, I'm good with. Bringing them on full-time, but stay within your budget.
Yeah, I think it's a good option.
Thank you, guys. Thanks, Andrea. Um, y'all, of course, we're, we just got done with the tournament. Um. Went, well, we had one car get, get. Yeah, I got one. Tires come with, right into some, but that's not, that's, is what it is, but it's going good. We, um, tore out the. Number seven green for replacing it. Should have all the. Got sod gonna be here tomorrow. Um. The drainage looks good. We did some work in the bottom of it to get better drainage. Got all the. Mud, dark mud out of there. We're putting, um, sand with peat moss back in it to be our base. Sod on top of it should be done tomorrow. And we will be able to play on it for a little while, but. That should fix number seven for being in such bad shape. It's kind of our big thing going on out there right now.
So what about those doors on east end of that big shop up there?
It's, it's got, it's scheduled for new doors.
So. Doors are sliding.
Yeah, just, yeah, just hand open the garage doors, set of the big old barn doors. And that's turning out, that's, that shop. It's turned out really nice. Um, it was, you know, it was, we had to do a lot of, because it kind of. You know, so it was just a pole barn, and then they, they poured concrete, and so there was gaps and all that. We got it all, all. Back level and, and fixed the floor and everything, got it insulated and everything, so it'll be nice. Other than that, that's all I got.
Anybody else? All right, thanks, you. Chad Cooper, Fire Ward, monthly report.
Monthly update from the fire department, so I'll walk you guys through it. You should have to hand out your, your packets, but. Currently, we have, uh, two, uh, grants, grant applications pending, total of $15,000. Get back from them soon, but I don't have a date on either one of those. As far as incidents, uh, last month, we had 29 incidents and two non-burns incidents, um. Kind of spread out throughout the whole county. It's about average for this time of year. It's our busy time of year, about one per day. Uh, there's one open fire investigation in the county. For fire prevention, we're slowing down a little bit. Uh, we're, we're shifting focus to wall and fire prevention and, uh, spoke, um, um. Firewise, public education, and we did have some smoke detector installations last month. As far as training goes, uh, we're just finishing up our, our training program. Last, matter of fact, last night, I just finished the Recruit Academy graduation. We have three new. Uh, firefighters that successfully completed the Recruit Academy, are now full-fledged members, and celebrated their accomplishment last night. Uh, but what you're looking at there is just, uh, update with, um, the current ongoing training with, um, implementation of our new first due. Records management system. Uh, we've issued taskbooks for some wildland firefighters, for, from pump operators, and some new, um, firefighter twos, which is the more, um, experienced leadership level firefighters. Uh, before they become officers. Um, and we're currently, uh, working on, on. The, uh, actually before I, um, we just finished the, uh, live fire training facility. That's the culmination of the, uh, of the Recruit Academy. It's, after they finish six months of training and everything else, the last step is to go through the Live Fire Training Academy. I just finished doing that last month, and then now that they're done with all that, then they can successfully graduate, and that's what we did last night. Uh, one thing I was gonna bring up is that we're, we're actively recruiting again, so the way our schedule works every year is, is beginning July 1st, we. We recruit from July all the way through the end of December, and then the first week in January, then, then all those recruits that join, they, they enroll into the, to the, the, the next. Uh, Recruit Academy. So we're actively recruiting new members, and, uh, my understanding, we have 11 new members that have signed up, so I'm excited about that as well.
Chad, did you say there's three that graduated?
Three graduated.
So how many usually start and get to the graduation point?
So generally, um, I, I, I try to set a goal for about 15 every year, and, and usually we'll get about seven. Uh, last year, we didn't make that. Last year, we had seven new firefighters join and, and three successfully completed. And that's right on, on par for average. It's usually about a 50% attrition rate. Um, it, it takes a lot to be a volunteer firefighter, and that's, that's when I want to know if they have the dedication, commitment, and time to, to be a volunteer force or not. I want to learn during the Recruit Academy before we put a tremendous amount of. Time, money, and effort into training and equipping them. And, and so, yeah, we, we set our Recruit Academy up like that on purpose, so. We, we know who's gonna build a stick around and, and, and be valuable for us for the long term. So, yeah, use about a 50% attrition rate, it's about average for us, and that's what we saw in this last one. But I certainly want to see more than three, don't get me wrong. It's, I'm, I'm doing everything we can right now for active recruiting, and I want to see those numbers come up, because they, we're, we're struggling right now. It's, it's, um, it's, it's, it's grim.
So how many active are in there on, that you have now, all together, roughly?
Oh, roughly, we're about 70, then, then we just opened up recruitment with the new, new firefighters. We'll be back north of 80 again. Um, and that's, I mean, so fighting way for us, if, if I was, if I had a, you know, every firefighter, every seat filled, about 95 would be 100%. So right now, we're about 20% down. So, doing all we can to actively recruit and bring those numbers back up, and certainly worried about it.
So is there any one department that's so low, it couldn't function in an emergency if they had to, or they all pretty even make staff?
Um, so Boulder's our least-staffed fire station right now. Um, it's, uh, we've, we've got six firefighters out there, and, and what we're struggling with is. Daytime response, you know, they're all busy out working in field or wherever they work, and they're unavailable for daytime response. Uh, the way we fill that gap, though, is, is we, we page multiple battalions to every fire, and so we, we, we fill it with the surrounding, you know, communities. All right, so moving on, cooperative service meetings, um, as you know, that's, that's a big part of our, of our department, um, meeting with their, our local state and federal partners. Something I will make note of is, is I went back and, and did final inspection on our new engine. Uh, there's a new engine that's, uh, we, we purchased over three years ago. It's now being completed. Uh, they just delivered it to Front Range Fire Apparatus in, in Colorado. And they're mounting all the, the, the loose tools and equipment right now. Um, I expect to take final delivery of that truck here in the next two weeks. Um, it's a major accomplishment. I'm very proud of, of putting that new truck in service and looking forward to enhancing our, our capability there in, in the Big Piney, Marlton fire stations. I'll let you guys know, but we'll, we'll, we'll advertise that and invite the public and do some traditional, um, you know, celebration for, you know, they call it a rollback ceremony to, um, introduce the new truck into the fleet.
So, so is that, is that the one? It's been four years ago. Is that the one you're talking about? It's been over four years now.
It's been four years. It's, it's been a little, I don't have the dates on me, but it's been, they're, they're about six months ahead of schedule right now.
It's just before I came on, I know, into the conversations.
Well, isn't that the one, that's million dollar truck, is that right? Yeah, that's the one that was ordered when. Commissioners. Burnett and Ro Hauser and Bousman were still on board.
Yeah, I can go back and look and get the dates.
Well, I'm just saying, it was before Mr. White was on board. He's been there going in. So it's been a while, what I'm saying. Had to have been over four years. That's fine. But I'd like to go back to the live fire exercise for a second. So. If we've got, and we do have, small buildings that need to be gone. When a little bit of snow falls, could that be a live fire exercise to burn those things down or not?
No, I, I don't condone or advocate for that. And the public will call once in a while and it's not something the fire department can do. It's, it's a big ask to, to tell our volunteers to. Give up their Saturday and come stand by to watch somebody, you know, burn off whatever their house is. The other thing is there's a tremendous amount of remediation that has to be done, significant amount with days of work that needs to be done to take all the. Carcinogens and hazardous materials and, and take it out of the building. The last thing is there's, every building is different. There's not a, there's not a. Controllable environment that you can send your firefighters through and ensure their safety. That's the reason why we have a, a fire training facility that's specifically designed and engineered. To provide live fire training so we can control that environment and control the, the heat and the fuel and, and the ventilation and the outputs and ensure the safety of our firefighters. So no, I, I do not condone or advocate that we shouldn't accept or burn, you know, donated buildings.
Okay, well, fair enough. That's why I asked the question. I didn't know. So I guess we'll let snows and torch it.
I know Billy has a program, what's it called? The C and D program with the, with the landfill that they can, they can accept that when somebody has like a. Mobile home trailer or something like that and he's going in once in a while.
Why don't I have anything?
Yeah, I've got. I'm sorry, I've got another couple of questions. I'm just curious about. I'll have to find them here in a minute. Bear with me. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just really curious. So in accounts payable. There's a bill in here for Starbucks for four dollars and seventeen cents. And I assume. W I must mean Wisconsin. So I'm assuming that's where you flew back to look at this. And another one of Dunkin' Donuts for seven sixty-eight. I'm just curious to know. Why the county pays those kinds of bills?
Commissioner, I misunderstand your, your question, but so as I mentioned, I went back and did final.
No, I understand that. Yeah. But Dunkin' Donuts and Starbucks?
Are you saying that you don't want me to eat or drink when I fly to, to go do final inspections on a fire truck?
You're missing the point.
No, I guess I might. To have a coffee in the morning?
Yeah, what, you can't afford a coffee in the morning?
Okay, all right. So it's, so I'm more than willing to have that conversation. Is, is that, is that, is that the stance of the county? Is that you don't want to?
No, I'm just curious, no.
Your employees when they travel?
Starbucks and Dunkin' Donuts is a little out of, in my opinion. I'm the only one here. I just think it's asking the county a lot to buy Dunkin' Donut and Starbucks coffee.
I, I would advocate, and I think the commissioners should, should consider looking at a standardized meal and expense and incidentals per diem rate. It's been well established. Most government agencies just pay an M E N I on, on reimbursement for their employees when they, when they travel. And then it's up to the employees to. Work within the confines of, of those, of those established rates. In absence of that, all I do is, is just, you know, have, have a breakfast, lunch and dinner and submit my reimbursements. I don't think that's any different.
Well, no, I understand that. That's not my issue. My issue is. It just seems to me like. If you're back there, wherever you go. Which by the way. I thought we had, while we're on the subject, just so I can get straight, I thought we had some sort of a. An agreement, if you would, that the rest of the commission would know when you take off on these kinds of things through Mr. White. I wasn't. Ever contacted. Doesn't mean it had to be, but I thought that's the agreement that we worked with. Was so that we knew where you took off or where you went. We wouldn't be caught flat footed when somebody asks the question. I don't think it's too much to ask that, to be notified, especially when you're going someplace like Wisconsin.
So I thought we, we did have that agreement, but then we changed that agreement and Lynn was going to go to all the departments and tell them to. Email out what they were doing like Janice does. And to my awareness, I don't think he's done that yet. So Chad did tell me, but procedure changed and, and remember that whole meeting we had, Lynn was going to go talk to everybody and tell them that. To email all of us.
Well, that could be, but I'm not going to get into it. I just, I just, I hate to be caught. Flat footed on these circumstances.
I get it too. Yeah, I think our chairman was going to take care of that and to my knowledge he hasn't yet. So I don't know what's going on there.
Well, I think it just should be a courtesy thing when, I don't care what the department head is. When they're going to be gone on, on the county's tax dollar, that. The commission who takes the guff on this stuff should be made aware of it. So that.
Yeah, I don't disagree Doug. I, I know we got some internal stuff that we got to figure out how that's going to happen when the chairman gets back.
Okay, well, that's all. I'm, I'm through with that. I'm not gonna. I'm not gonna go move forward with it.
Do you have a follow-up on that at all? I mean, don't, don't go out of here, you know what I'm saying? No, now's the time to, if you do have something to say, I'd appreciate it.
I, I, I duly notified Commissioner White and worked within the established parameters that I've been set. Nothing further to comment on.
Okay, well, I didn't want to give you the opportunity. Okay, thank you. So nothing else, I guess. Appreciate it. If you got everything there, we'll move on. All right, thank you. All right, Andre. Maintenance Department update.
Nothing crazy here with rendezvous. Takes up a bit of our time, but we helped set up and tear down for rendezvous. Everything went pretty smoothly. We had some electrical issues over at the food basket. We added a bunch of lights because they wanted it brighter in there. And so we did that for them, but. System's pretty old and even though it was within the tolerance of the breaker, it was still popping the breaker. So we had to. Modify the system and split it. So now half the lights are on one breaker and the other half on another. Took a little bit of time. Let's see, Kindle fire, we did some painting over there. The snow damaged some of the wood on the building, you know, just the paint. So we. Cleaned it up and painted it. Looks really good actually. Changed a hot water tank at Emergency Management. They had a leaky tank. Actually changed it a couple of times because the other. New one failed, so we had to get a, to replace it and then go do it again. We're doing annual service on all the generators, which is something we do every year. It's one of our big, big list items or tasks. We're still in the middle of it, but we got quite a few done already. The fire halls are done. Marbleton Sheriff's Office, Senior Centers. They've all been serviced and inspected. Next, well, once we finish, then there will be the repair list is after that. And just, you know, just other miscellaneous little things, hanging some pictures and slow drains. We had to deal with this air issue during rendezvous. The wind blew in odd direction. And then was blowing exhaust from the generators into, into the courthouse, which is, it's the first time it's ever happened in all the years that we've been over there, but. Blew just the right direction and the generator wasn't. Wasn't, didn't have the right demand on it. So it was running really rough because they weren't pulling enough from it. Elevator issues and been changing air filters. That's about it.
You set a new date for the Marbleton Senior Center concrete?
Supposed to be this week.
You got past the wedding issues?
Yeah, yeah. I talked to Josh, called me and asked if we're still good for this week. I said, yeah. So.
So what was the bid? How much difference?
They were about the same within, you know, like within the same.
Three hundred bucks or something?
Yeah. So.
So what was the total? Do you remember what?
Oh, not, not, it's like thirty-five thousand or something like that. I think, no, no.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, but I, I budgeted for thirty-five. So. It's all going to depend on the soil though too. Those could change. The one guy did, didn't totally factor that in. And the other one did talk to me and he said, this is the bid, but. If we run into soil issues, there may be more material we got to bring in. But that's just part of concrete. That's normal.
All right. So with what's coming up next, are you involved in that at all? Permanent electricity order?
Yeah, that's something that we've, we discussed in the past when we were going to do the parking lot. We were going to set up the electrical over there.
I mean, just, do they need to come up here? Do you need to be with them? Travis, you want to come on up?
Morning. Sorry.
No, you're good. You're good. No, you're fine. He just asked. So we thought we'd do it now.
Yeah, so thanks for your time this morning. We just wanted to kind of bring everybody that was involved in and talk about the incident over on. Starting late that Thursday night, the tenth into Friday morning. The generators were out by the food trucks were, like Andre said, producing more smoke than usual. And it was. Blowing just perfectly over the courthouse and it was coming into the air handlers, into the jail, into dispatch, into the basement. Sheriff's office. I don't know about court because I don't believe they open Friday today.
We don't know. I mean, they just.
This is starting Thursday morning. So about a four-day period, I think it's oxygen facility. Multiple detention officers, dispatch staff complaining headaches and filling in inmates as well. Made multiple calls to town pine dale maintenance and tried to find alternatives. We moved the generator two to three times. Ended up in the alleyway over by the Sundance. I understand even some of the patrons at the Sundance complained of some symptoms and some, even some of the vendors were outside. So they're filling in, be in there all day. Just that one generator, if it's not under enough power load, it says it would produce smoke, couldn't get it to stop. So with that in mind. We had unified fire come over twice and do CO checks in the facility. At one point it did detect a little bit in booking. Measurable amount. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the air handler also detected some kind of.
So the, the system worked the way it was supposed to. It, it kicked on the exhaust fans and. Started pulling that out once it detected it. So actually the good news in it is that everything worked the way it was supposed to. McKenna filed up some stuff for us a little bit on the air handlers, you know, put a lot of alarms on the system, which. Most of them cleared themselves and then other ones we had to clear out. Yeah, I mean, it was an issue, but it's also the only time it's ever happened. So.
Never happened in the past. We did have Jim Mitchell from Emergency Management come over and bring air purifiers twice. To help clear the air in the main pod that was affected with the jail. Yeah, so with that in mind. Couple of solutions we came up with, we're willing to entertain other ones, but seems to us the most cost-effective, easy fix would be to. Entertain putting the fifteen dollar power meter on the stot lot over there.
It's not fifteen dollars.
Do a hookup.
Yeah, I mean, that, there's going to be more than that because if I have to have someone come over there and do it, that what I'm going to tell them is we need to set it up that. We can still do rendezvous. As if, without the generators, which would be quite, it's, it's.
What would be, what would be?
It's not.
Less than.
Oh, I don't know. I don't know. I would have electricians come in and look at it and find out what we got.
When I called the electrician that were on site, they told us that's all it would take plus some plug modification. I don't, I'm not aware of.
That, that would probably just be to have power. Like we could reco, like we thought about doing this in the past because we can park the man lift over there and plug it in instead of at the fire hall. When we bring it, Billy could plug in, snow moving equipment, which sometimes he has to plug that.
Our extra transport jail vehicles, we've had to plug in in the past.
I mean, there's some good reasons to do it, but it won't just be a. No, because you, you're going to need pedestals or they're going to need longer cable because they have to run it, you know, to all those vendors. And I mean, there's going to have to be some other plugins set up there that they can, because that's bigger power.
Yeah, well, because we talked about moving that anyway over there at one time. It's out there in the middle of parking lot, you know, what he's going to do.
Yeah, we were going to do a whole parking lot and then when we did it, we were going to put the electrical back up, put up some power pedestals for vehicles to plug into. But when that whole parking lot thing went away, I think that was, that kind of just went away with it. We could still do the power thing. I would just have to get some quotes and stuff and see.
We, we invited the town and Main Street Pine Dale today to, to comment on their side, but the only alternative we could think is to move the food truck somewhere else. In future to avoid the issue, just worry about inmate and staff safety. I realize it hasn't happened in the past before, but it was four days of that. This is also fixed dispatch.
So rather than. When they're running their own generators, the county supplies everybody power.
That's, I think that's an oversimplification. Sorry.
Yeah, Tyler Swafford, I'm a Pine Dale Town Councilman, as well as I sit on Main Street Pine Dale. But I was also there at, what, two thirty to forty-three in the morning on that Thursday. And feeling some calls, but I, I think that's a little bit of an oversimplification, just simply that we've got. It sounded to me in the conversations that to get rid of the emissions problem, if you have power.
Maybe Tyler, if you would go up there and.
Yeah, those people.
Yeah, he's a fun speaker.
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we, we realized after some conversations and waiting on the fire department to roll through, thanks to them as well. For coming in late in the morning, early morning, I guess, late tonight, early morning. Kind of the easy solution would just be to get rid of all the emissions at all, which is having no generators and thus being able to simply use that service that's there. The electrician that was volunteering his time was from Design Electric. He didn't think it would be that rough. We have spider boxes that are available to us through volunteer means and. Companies that volunteer those spider boxes for our usage. So you guys, the county, wouldn't have to provide that necessarily. The only thing that we were asking or considering through this, multiple use cases would be just to. Set it up so that we can actually use that service that's already ran right there. He thought that the service was already set up to, we could do that. I don't, we don't.
I don't know. So there used to be a house on that property and then the attorney's office was there. That was their old power.
So it's probably more residential than a bigger, like a bigger.
Possibly. I would, I mean, I would just get someone out and just, I mean, the best, I don't want to speculate because. Let me get in here and it's a lot more money. It's never, it's never less than what we think.
I know from my perspective, it seems that with a little bit of, you know, planning ahead and if that service line was available, we wouldn't have you guys coming to work and foot the bill. Like for rendezvous, for instance, for that increased power pull during that time, it would easily be one of those things where it's like, hey, we think it's going to be X. We will either reimburse you for X from Main Street Pine Dale, or we would simply charge our, our food vendors for power, which we already do. Therefore, we could allocate that cost amongst the people that are really using it. And then we could simply hand over a check to the county as needed. Or if you were gracious enough, maybe donate the five hundred bucks or whatever it would be moving along.
Or if you were gracious enough, maybe donate the five hundred bucks or whatever it would be moving along in the future. Different question, different time, totally different scenario. But that's, and I didn't need to, to cut you off there. I just wanted to be clear about what we were thinking. So. Um, it, but that night it seemed like there were multiple use cases rather than just the one-off, one weekend a year or week a year. Um, with us at, for the food vendor, for the food fair out here, um, it sounded like to me. That there were multiple use cases amongst different county departments. So that's where this whole thing kind of started to mold from. Um, unfortunately, it was two degrees out of three hundred and sixty possible, um, that the wind was blowing for. I don't know how many hours before I got there, but by the time I left at four thirty in the morning on Thursday morning, the wind had shifted a little bit and then it wasn't a problem for. Another, I don't know, twelve, twenty-four hours, something like that, but.
Seemed like a late evening time. Yeah, it started to get a bit.
It's just, I mean, bad luck. I think Jim put it best. He was like, it's just kind of bad luck, but in order to, you know, to literally manage that risk. This seems like an easy solution. I know you guys.
I can just get a quote and report to you guys and you can decide.
I'd be there too.
Personally, I think Andre just. Use you as a starting point, okay, to kind of. You know, we were involved and kind of see what possibility, different possibilities there are. Maybe get a close figure of what we're talking about. That's personally how I feel about the rest of them.
That's what I think we should do. I'll just give a quote.
So are you talking multiple power outlets? Pedestals, so to speak, along that street so individuals can plug in as we go?
No. So I was gonna, if we put, if we hook it up, I mean. I would do a couple of things for us, you know, which would be. Putting some outlets for like man lift, uh, Billy's equipment in the wintertime, you know, he can plug it in there. Um, and like stuff like that, nothing, nothing else. But the only problem is, is we might have to do a situation where we. Have it locked so people can't just come plug the camper into it or plug in, you know, their own vehicles and stuff. That would be the only issues. Plug in. So I would probably make sure. That, that can't be done, maybe.
And then they could feed their spider boxes during.
And then the other thing is I would have the electrician say, hey, look, we usually have the two generators. So I probably, I'm gonna call Design Electric. And say, we need it set up so that. When rendezvous comes, we can get, they can get power to them easily. I don't know if that means putting up a couple of pedestals on the property where the generators kind of normally are at, but. If not, they can, so, you know, maybe they could find a way and bring the cable and have it hooked up by the electricians.
Yeah, and we do have the spider boxes. The electricians do come and do that. Um, and they did move those multiple times. So we know that we have enough room to get to everybody.
When you say the boxes, you're talking about like the one that we normally bring to?
The black and yellow, is that the?
Oh, I saw those this year.
But yeah, we call those. Spider, we, we borrow yours too.
Okay. Plus though, but it's like, they're like, what, we, is what I'm getting. Okay.
Yeah. So you wouldn't actually need to run service anywhere further on that property than just.
Just have.
Getting that pedestal where it's at, get it to go. Or if you guys wanted to move it over, I don't want to talk to Commissioner White. Um. Possibly moving it over on the other side, kind of in that corner with, uh, of the green space.
What, the whole, all the power?
Yeah, just moving it across and then that would free up a lot more parking for you guys, for your vehicles as well.
Run into a bunch.
Well, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'd rather leave that where it is for now.
Yeah, we probably just leave it where it's at, just because we'd have to put it across that grass and everything and then we finally got them.
No, that's totally fine. Yeah, no, and it wasn't. I know it would come up in the past, so that's.
But you said you'd pay for it. Is that now?
Pay for what?
Moving it over.
All the time.
Well, I guess we'd have to see a number first, right? So we don't have. Uh, I mean, if it's free, free sounds good to me, but, um, no, and again, we have, uh, Design Electric guys were there, um.
Yeah.
Was who we dealt with. Okay. Um, it, he didn't make it seem like it was going to be that difficult, um, other than there would need to be a meter there from Rocky Mountain Power. Could have totally undersold it. It wasn't exactly the right scenario to ask for a quote or to get money, or not get money, but. Get a quote so that, you know, you guys have a, that kind of decision to look at possibly.
And what would the meter be for?
Rocky Mountain Power. There's no meter there right now. That's just for your usage. Like you can't have, you can't just plug into Rocky Mountain Power with no meter.
Oh, I understand that. Third grade, I'm saying. But I'm just saying, well, the pedestal is now, is that where you put a meter or somewhere down the line?
No, I put it over there.
But the power's to it. Why would you need a meter?
Well, we have to, I mean, it's gotta be metered. So we'd have to get it set. Like the power's turned, turned off for that property.
Well, that's what I wanted.
Yeah, so we have to.
Just need the new meter installed.
Because I knew there was power there. That's all I'm getting.
Yeah, we have to just get it set back up, but, um, there's gonna have to, if, but for. It to work for them and us, there would, I would have to have an electrician come and. Add some things.
And again, the rendezvous ask is just simply one weekend a year. These guys in the departments have way more usage than. Than what we would. We would just ask that we could use it for that weekend, literally. And we could come in here and formally request that in February, March or something at that time. Being metered, then we can have an idea of how much we're gonna use over the weekend. I mean, we're talking one weekend out of the whole year. Yeah, exactly. If we can use that for that one weekend, whatever that increase is, obviously our nonprofit would pay that bump in the cost. Yeah, and it eliminates this issue that we had with, um. Folks in the jail or jailers or dispatch getting sick, um, just nip that in the bud real easily. So.
Well, I think, I think we definitely need to figure out what amp service that is. Cause I mean, if it's only a four hundred amp service over there, which would make sense on two residential properties, two hundred amps going to each house. Probably looking at something, you're probably looking at an eight hundred amp service to run that, that many food trucks, but. See what it is and get us a cost, get us some options.
Yeah, I'd, I'd kind of like to see you come in here with a schematic, if you would, and a cost associated with it. Because it will be more than what you think it will. That's just the way the world works today. So. You know, but I, I, I can see it being an okay thing, but let's see. How much of an okay thing it's gonna be. And I'd like to see. Envision, a little piece of paper that says, this is what it looks like or would, would look like once it's in place.
Quote, I'll just tell them to give me a good breakdown on it.
Okay. Yeah.
And, and I know from, in talking with the group kind of beforehand, um. I never felt like you guys were gonna make a decision necessarily today. To me, it made more sense just to see if there would be some interest from the county's perspective. And then kind of move from there. That just was, made sense to me. So that you guys know what we're dealing with, figure out the situation that we dealt with a couple of weeks back.
Yeah. Well, I know what the rendezvous is all about and, and, uh, so if it enhances that, plus the safety factor that we're hearing from the. One year and twenty-five doesn't sound like a lot. Maybe it'd be another twenty-five. The wind will keep blowing that way, but unfortunately that's not the case this year at least. That wind's been everywhere. So.
If it helps, I have some ballpark figures on cost of what that could have looked like and what it did look like just over the weekend that might help.
Yeah, I, I, you know, we, we, we need to see what, what we're looking at.
You want me to share those now? Sure. Um. Approximate, uh, cost for Jim to bring the true purifiers for the weekend was sixteen hundred dollars plus his overtime. And about three hundred dollars. Um, if I were to have to move the ten inmates to Sweetwater per se, or King County Jail. Because it was inhabitable, would have been approximately eight thousand dollars. That, uh, for the four days to do that. Plus we would have had to coordinate, we have an agreement with the school to use a bus to transport. We had to, we had to pay their time.
And then move dispatch.
And then move dispatch down to Marlton, but that. Takes some time. Someone still has to stay behind while someone goes, gets in place. So there's a delay there, but that would have had to occur also.
Say, get your quote and come back.
Yeah, we're overthinking this.
All right. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Amber.
Thank you. Okay, Amber Anderson, her quarterly report from PAC.
Morning.
Morning. Thank you all for giving me some time. Um, at our annual, um, budget. Share meeting when we do for our joint powers agreement with you, I had requested just to update you guys quarterly on PAC happenings in the community. Um, and with that, here I am. So I'll look forward to seeing you guys every three months. Um, and I'll try to keep it brief and just. Do the big highlights of, of what PAC's been doing in the community. So, um, I first like to start with thanking you guys for, um. Assigning two representatives to our joint powers, um, board. We have had our first meeting with, with those two new board members. They've on boarded and been a part of it and, and we're moving forward and we're very excited, but. Without that support, um, the joint powers agreement would have dis, disbanded and, um. I don't know that we could continue to serve the community at the level that we do. So that was a really grateful decision, um, that you guys made. So thank you very, very much for that. Um, so just, yeah, kind of highlight what we've been doing. I don't want to read through the whole report. Um, but, uh, community CPR classes continue to be really popular, um, and in high demand and, um. Through the summer, we are doing, um, splash pad Wednesdays, which we were able to purchase equipment, um, with funding that we received from the Sublet County Rec Board. So. If you're free from eleven to one on a Wednesday, swing by the outdoor courts at PAC and check out the fun with all of the water splash features out there. It's been a really, a really good addition and it's been very popular. Um, we are working through details right now. We are proud to announce that we were the recipient of a national grant with the National Rec and Park Association. Um, and so that will go into, uh, creating a cowboy code of ethics, code of conduct for all of our programs across the board. Um, which we're really excited about. We have introduced it with our summer day camp that we currently offer, but we'll be, um, expanding it for all of our youth sports. Um, and yeah, it'll be a really, really neat program to look at altogether. Um, and then our big thing happening this summer continues to be Little Wrangler Day Camp. So you may see our groups out biking around town, but we average forty kids a day. Um, Monday through Friday, we continue to be the largest elementary age childcare in the community for full day service throughout the summer months. So. We'll finish that through mid-August and then we'll move into our fall planning. Um. Based on information received through a community needs assessment, we will plan on offering a Friday camp. For no school Fridays starting in September. So we're working through all those logistics now, but, um. Fall planning and registration will open in early August. So. Um, and then our leisure pool is complete and open after our big remodel project. So if you haven't been in there, I invite you to come in more than welcome, um, to give you a tour if you'd like to see it. Um, or even better yet, come use it, check out the gold plunge, see what you, see what you think of that. So. Um, outside of that, I'll answer any questions that you guys might have, but I just again, want to thank you guys and kind of highlight how we're serving the community.
So what's your elementary daycare look like? They, they pay a fee to be there?
It's a daily registration fee. Yes, that they do. Um, it was thirty-five. It was reduced to thirty-two dollars a day. Um, with a donor through friends at PAC that reduced the tuition for it, but they're with us from seven forty-five to five fifteen. So it's a full day care.
And so, I mean, are you state mandated to have to have so many adults with them or?
We are not state mandated. We set our own, um, guidelines. So we do one for ten. If we're around water, it's one for seven. Anytime we're around water, we have a certified lifeguard along as well that does not count towards the ratios of it. So.
You're, you're preparing for the four day week, right?
We are, yeah.
Just don't know what to expect.
We don't fully know. No. We know there'll be some need, but we don't know how big the need will be. And we work with, uh, we call ourselves the community collaborators, but there's a group. So library, PFAC, BOCs, those that have a lot of youth service programming. Um, we meet regularly. So we'll meet early August to share what every person has planned and collaborate all of our program efforts. So.
So with this construction project finished, everything looks good for the near future as far as any work has to be done?
Um, not, not in that leisure pool. I mean, PAC's a gigantic building. There's always ongoing maintenance with it. Um, not off the top of my head. No, no, no major reconstruction. So, and there's no water loss. So we have prepared our leaks. So.
So I look at these total visits per month, but they're, to my, they're staggering numbers.
They're big numbers.
Yeah.
Busy.
So. I'm really curious that. The down surge, if you would, in May versus April and June, what accounts for that?
Um, usually this would not be the case, but this year with our leisure pool closed, um, it definitely affected the number of visits that we received. So. And in May, we tend to have a large, a large number of, um, groups that come, especially at the end of the school year, and we didn't have any of those visits this year with the leisure pool being closed.
Well, I look at like seventy-one hundred. That's on a daily basis. That's, uh. A lot.
Yes.
A lot. And so, you know, I, I, I look at the. Aquatic center as being. You know, it. It, it's an amazing feature of this community to have that thing there. And the reason that it is so successful is because of the folks who are in charge of it, yourself included.
Thank you.
Because I, I know you guys, this just doesn't happen, these kind of things. There's a lot of work goes into it and. So you're to be commended, at least from my perspective, for making that thing as functional and as. As, uh. User friendly as it is. And this. This says a lot in one page. Thank you for that. This does say a lot.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
No, thanks.
All right. Thanks for coming. We appreciate that.
Well, I appreciate your guys' time. Thank you.
All right. Emily. No, we'll get you. I want you to go back to work.
Morning, come on up.
Morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Is this Mike?
Are you recording? Okay.
Hello, hello, hello.
I'm me today.
Thank you.
All right. Good morning. So, um, we've, we're coming before you this morning. This is the museum board representatives, um. Talking about the shortfall that we had this year and how I moved money from our general fund to make that board whole. And they're still short. So they are coming before you, um, with a, a further request. So when I get. Information from the clerk's office every year, she gives me a sheet that looks like this, um, that shows the amount of money that, um. They reported as having on hand, along with the information for their budget for that year and what will be pulled from taxes. As far as what we collect countywide for property taxes. And then every month when I submit a payment to them. I give them a copy of this sheet that shows the amount of money that I'm sending to them, what portion of it is from property taxes, what portion of it is from motor vehicle. And the motor vehicle, um, that's on the, the left-hand column, doesn't count towards their, their budgetary ask from property taxes. So it's sort of subtracted off. Um, for this past year, twenty-four, twenty-five, the amount of motor vehicle taxes that were collected. Um, was eighty-six hundred dollars. And if you look on the far right-hand at the top. Um, the actual paid. Versus what we collected for that first, I guess it would have been June collection, um, the actual paid is a lot more. In the red, the twenty-one thousand, two dollars and nine cents is what we actually collected in June of twenty twenty-four. But what I remitted to them was a hundred and sixteen, five, ten, seventy-seven. And you'll see in that next column there where it says the difference. Was ninety-five thousand, five oh eight, sixty-eight. And that was an overage that we had collected the year before. And so I don't overpay them. I just held on to that money that was collected in the prior year. And then on the first payment for the new fiscal year, I remitted all of that. I think where the problem lay is that, um. Our former clerk, when she did the budget, she subtracted that ninety-five thousand dollars off. Of what was going to be asked as part of the property tax collection. Um, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, gentlemen, but that I think is what they're short. Is that ninety-five thousand dollars?
We're not short that much.
Okay. So go ahead.
Good. We're, we're actually short of. Going back and back into the numbers and everything, I think we're actually short about nineteen thousand. So we, we've had carryovers and all that to figure into it, but. I believe if, I think nineteen thousand would. Make us whole for the fiscal year of twenty twenty-five. Last year, last year.
Now, so what's a remedy for this?
So if you look at the, the report that I do for them every month, um, the amount that was actually part of the property tax. Um, that was taken was four forty-eight, nine fourteen. Once I reach that point, and I, if you look at the very. Once I reached that point, and if you look at the very last, it says June extra payment, that 93,54931 was what we didn't collect in property taxes that I took from our general fund to make that dollar amount at the bottom zero, so that they were paid in full for the amount that, that was their ask for the year. Um, and I think the only year that they haven't been paid in full that I can see was back in 2017, 16? It was when Roxanna and Mary were in, in um, office, and I don't remember what the dollar amount of you guys were short that year, but.
It was before my time.
It was like 43,000.
The money is always there, it's always there, so I never took it for granted. Till we got to the end of the year, like, uh, we don't have enough, so.
And, and Mr. Chairman, I think that probably part of the problem is they really don't have a rainy day fund. They don't have any way to make up the difference for those years when we are short. Um, and so I don't know if in their budget, they have now some kind of mechanism to create some kind of a little rainy day fund so that when there are shortages, they don't have to come back to the county. Um, I don't know, but from what I'm looking at, the amount of money that we were supposed to pay them, we did pay them. So I don't know what the solution is, aside from having them have some kind of a rainy day fund that they can use if they need to.
So is that something we can create now?
In, in the budget that we have for next year, there's a $200,000 rainy day.
Right, right.
So we have that going forward, but that doesn't get us fixed for, yeah.
I don't know, I don't. You might go back to that 95,000 higher clerk.
So that 95,50868 was funds that we collected in 2023, 24 fiscal year that was over above their ask. And that was when we started really getting a lot of those um, prepayments for minerals. And so they were getting dollars that we hadn't really accounted for. And so rather than overpaying them in 23, 24, it did not go to them. Once I reached the point where it says balance to pay them is zero, the only monies that I submit at that point is motor vehicle. And I, that usually happens with REC and um, the Fairground, those two boards. They reach their ask way before we've done collecting property taxes for the year. So I stopped sending them money that we collect for property taxes, and I remit only the motor vehicle taxes to them. The museum and the library don't usually get to that point.
So I'm still at a loss of how the shortages come about?
I don't, I don't know either, I really don't.
If you, if you look at this page, it shows the correct budget amount, but where, where, if you look at this year, they subtracted 60,500 because that is the, that is the carryover that the Green Room Valley Museum has every year, and they're slush funds, so we can make it to the budget. Um, but instead of taking that 60,500 off, they took 145,500 off, which I don't, I don't understand why. There isn't any record of that that I'm aware of that, that explains why that amount of money was pulled out of our budget.
And that would be a question for our former clerk.
Yeah, I don't know, second, that person probably knows why.
Right, I always use whatever that dollar amount, because she just gives me this report, this column that circled, that 448914, if you'll look on your spreadsheet that I give to them, that's the dollar amount that I go by. So I don't know if it was just an, an error that she removed more money than she should have. I, I don't know, we can only speculate.
But I think it still comes back to the 95,000 that was rolled over the next year that was subtracted here, and we didn't ever get that.
But how to correct it?
So when you submitted your budget, you weren't aware of the 95,000? No. We, we got a lesson in this too. We need to look at the numbers a little more closely. I mean, we've been loping along and everything's been fine, that just hasn't ever been a problem, but this is a damn true problem this year.
Well, and the 95,000 would have been reflected in the last report that I sent the year before, and it would have been over on that right-hand side as a overage that wasn't paid. It would, it would have showed on there, but I don't think they understood that it was being subtracted from their ask for the next year.
Right. So how's your suggestion? I, I see a loan, I, I'm not interested in loans, how's, how's our suggestion to fix this?
So what we did was we moved money, that 93,54931, we moved that from the general fund. At this time, that money is, is moved into, because we have closed 2024, all of the 10-3 accounts, which are revenue accounts, all the 10-4 accounts, which are expenditure accounts, then zero out, pooled to the general fund. Um, and so they're, they all start at zero on the first of, of July. So right now, that account, because we haven't collected any property taxes, um, it shows a $0 balance. So I don't know if we pull it from the general fund, their $20,000 request, and just have a negative balance until we start collecting property taxes again. Um, I don't know.
But the 93 rolled out.
93 has already been paid to them.
That, that's been paid.
That has been paid, we paid that to them mid-June.
Today, that's probably the only thing we can do, and I think we have a choice today. So is that something an auditor's going to look at?
Um, I don't know, it probably is, but we'll have to have, you know, as long as we have record of what happened and meetings and things like that, I think it's probably fine for the auditor. He'll want to just have proof that it was verified through you all, your board, that it was an okay thing to do.
I'm fine with that, anybody else? Yeah, I don't see any other way. Mr. Vicker, you got a comment there?
So the 8,600, it shows here is what you're actually short?
No, 8,609.24 is just what we collected for motor vehicle renewal registrations. And that money has already been submitted to them. I don't count it as part of their ask because the, the 448914 at the top there is only from property taxes. So that's the amount that I worry about as far as when I've overpaid or underpaid a board, because the motor vehicle is, it's such a wishy-washy number that it doesn't really count as part of their ask.
So with a 25% reduction in property taxes here, what's that gonna? How, how are we gonna make that up at the end of the year, already starting out 20,000?
So, in my opinion, um, Commissioner, I think that if property taxes are reduced by 25%, then their ask needs to go up 25%.
But if that's a scenario, that's, they're not the only one that'll do that.
You're correct.
It's gonna, their ask, just a small part, it just escalates.
Emily, do you know what state statute allows their mill levy to be, is it one, two?
I, I don't know what their maximum mill levy is, I don't know. And that's been one of the things that's happened statewide, is that those that have a mill ask for their full mill. Whatever the maximum amount is, that's what they ask for in order to cover shortfalls like this.
Well, I thought it was a mill, were you guys?
I don't know.
It's our, it's through our 12 mills, but we're.
Yeah, I know, but, but they.
Layla would know that, I don't know off the top of my head.
Well, my suggestion is we go with the, like I said, even the 20,000. Be real careful about getting the throwdown, we all agree, and they agree. And if there is, pops up that we're not eligible to fire you.
Right, and it might be um, a good idea for your board to submit something to us in writing as part of your minutes that reflect that request and that ask so that we have something for the auditors.
We could do that.
Okay.
So is this something that you think we'll be handling, have a motion to do this, I said?
Probably not a bad idea.
So would anybody like to make a motion about uh, 20,000 for the museum day? We have to have in the motion, it's gonna have a negative balance in our.
Oh, sure.
20,000 collected, or just make a motion, or?
I'd say just a motion, yeah, yeah.
I'd make a motion to grant the museum over 20,000 for their shortfall at the moment. Can I have a second, anywhere?
One second.
Okay, motion then. Seconded, so any discussion between us now, are we done with that? All right, I'll ask for a vote, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Votes passed for one absent today. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Hope we did you some.
We will pay more attention, we don't like to look at it.
You're not the only one that votes against, and they follow up again here, so.
Thank you, appreciate it, thanks.
Let's see, 11 o'clock, want to take a 10-minute break?
How are you?
Thanks for uh.
You're in the hot seat. Yeah, I know, we wanted to see you. It's good to see you under pressure.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go with brief.
I would say I'll try and be short, but that's also a struggle. I know, so you got the joke. Glad to hear that somebody's paying attention. Okay, first and foremost, we have the antiquities loan agreement, and I believe that Andrea and Mr. Gilchrist are here with the, with the Mountain Man Museum if there are any questions for them. But just to bring you all up to speed, if you're unaware or if you don't recall, because the last time we did this was about five years ago, the county owns a variety of documents. I actually don't know the nature of those documents. I'm sure these guys can tell you a little bit more about them if you would like to know. County owns documents they are on loan, quote unquote, essentially for free with the Historical Society, and we just have this agreement that establishes that they have the documents, that they are the counties. Last time we did this, we did this for five years. I'm suggesting that we bump it for a ten year rotation of how often we do this. They were really good at reminding us that the loan agreement had expired, and so I'm anticipating that they will continue to do so at the tenure mark. Any questions about this agreement? I believe it was in your packet.
Did the money stay the same as far as what they're worth?
I don't know, and I would defer.
The client?
We haven't had a brand praise during anything, so it is volume.
So, the value just stayed the same there?
Perfect. Thanks, Clint.
Okay, any discussion on the tenure? Everybody okay with that? Anybody got a question on it? Studying how hard they're making it. Just wondering what kind of items these are. He'll get you, he'll let you in the museum free. Or I'll pay your fine. Or you can just go around and try to figure out which ones. So, do you want to make this motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the antiquity loan agreement for a ten year period between the county and the Historical Society.
All right, is there a second?
Seconded.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Against four oh one absent. So, thank you.
Okay, yeah, go ahead and get signatures on that, and then I'll hand it off. I'll be good to go.
Like one spot or what?
I believe there's initials at the bottom for everyone, and then there'll be a, or for, there's initial on the bottom of every page, and then sign. Yeah. Just as you sign, do your signature, and then just write the word four.
We got.
Twenty seconds. And initial right there where it says S.C., Sublet County. I would like the record to reflect that Mr. Stevens is not complaining about initialing at the bottom of the page.
He doesn't have corporal tunnel yet.
Oh.
Give him about three weeks in that seat.
Okay, I'll hand this up to these guys real quick. Thank you. Okay, next up. Next up is the resolution following the zone change from, from last meeting. This has been drafted up. I've reviewed it. It should be good to go on that Blue Spruce.
Make a motion. Yes, sir.
I'd make a motion to approve Resolution twenty five dash zero, or one zero zero four nine eight W. Changing agricultural zoning to every industrial where Blue Spruce is operating.
So, any discussion on this?
Yeah, I've, I have a question on it. It's all, so. Let me see if I can find where it's at before I.
And I am bringing this to the board on request of planning its owning, folks.
Your what?
I'm presenting it.
Yeah, okay, okay.
I'm just presenting on their request.
Okay, so. So, the zoning change is tied to this project as presented today. Now, I think I read, let me look here and see, the footprint is not the actual three hundred and twenty acres, is that correct? The actual footprint of the facility?
I believe the footprint, if memory serves, was closer to a hundred acres, but they didn't know exactly where in the three hundred.
Right, right. No, I understand that part. So, I guess the question that I would have is, in the event this property, let's say this property is sold to a bigger company, which it happens all the time. Will that, will this zone change require them to come back and get authorization to utilize the whole three hundred and twenty acres or just a hundred acres?
Mr. Vice Chairman and Commissioner Vickery, so just a ten thousand foot view on how these operate, when there is a zone change, that zone change runs with the land.
I understand that.
And so, just by, just by virtue of transfer of ownership does not change any of the, of the first property owner's rights into the second. Or they would, yes, to your question, would have to come back if they wanted to do something different.
Different, okay. That takes care of my, my question.
Anybody else?
And just point of order, you're just, you're just ratifying the documentation. The zone, the zone change decision was already, has already occurred.
So.
Through the zoning board.
Through this board.
Through this board.
That decision already occurred. This is just the resolution that, that memorializes the decision that was already made by the board. So, you're just signing, you're just voting today to approve the document itself.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, go ahead. You want the motion? Again, I do.
I think, I think we already had the motion in the second, right?
Yeah, it was.
Yeah.
There, yeah, there was already the motion. I was just pointing out.
I thought you said just to vote on this itself, so. So, we don't need, do we sign it or anything?
So, you.
No, I'm, I'm fine with it. I've got that explained, yeah.
All right, just, we'll, all in favor of this resolution? Opposed?
He said he was fine with it.
He was.
No, I'm not opposed to it. I'm fine with it.
Okay, all right. So, it passed four to zero, and with one absent, so.
And this resolution gets everybody's signature on it.
We signed it, boys. Just.
Preferably the one that says Dave Stevens.
Make sure you didn't miss all of it, too.
Yeah.
There's always, there's always one in every group. Okay, next up, High Mountain Resolution. This is a High Mountain Water District Resolution. This came across, this has been put on under me just because it is a resolution. I don't have a ton of background on this, and so I, I, I don't have, I don't, I can't answer any questions. I don't know if anybody from High Mountain is here or not to speak to this.
Do we have to do that today? It may be nice if they were here, because there's all kinds of things going on up there. Water meters been installed, and.
I don't know the answer to that question, candidly.
I wish they had somebody here, because there's a lot of people turmoil up there. It's completely different. I don't, I don't.
This is just the resolution of their adopted budget.
Okay, well, we can go for that.
So.
Be nice next time they would have a representative, so. We just have to approve their meeting minutes?
It's their budget that you're approving.
I make a motion to approve Resolution number two zero two five dash zero zero one with High Meadow Ranch Water District Budget Approval.
And for clarity, for the minutes, it is their resolution number. It's, that's not a county resolution.
So, is there a second?
One second.
I'd like to vote on this. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Four oh one.
I. First date of July.
I think the rest are like road, road districts.
I don't really have an answer to that. Thank you. Next up, I have a request for a special prosecutor. This is coming out of my office to bring you up to speed on these, because we don't have to do them that often. When my office has a conflict with reviewing or making a charging decision on a prosecution, we will bring in a special prosecutor, and then you all make the decision to determine the nature and necessity of hiring outside counsel. The word hiring is somewhat of a misnomer. They are being hired, but they're not being paid. However, if there are incidentals tied to their appointment, such as travel or anything else, if they had to come to Pine Dale for trial, the county would be on the hook for that. But this would be a special prosecutor to review an investigation that occurred where the target of the investigation was or is a former employee of the Sublet County Sheriff's Office. And so, I'm asking you all respectively to, or respectfully to approve and appoint Richard Stout. He is the Teton County Prosecutor, County and Prosecuting Attorney, to act on, to act in his capacity as special prosecutor to review and prosecute this case.
You have a motion to do that?
Yes, please and thank you. Any questions about that?
Do we name him in the motion?
I believe so.
Make a motion to appoint a special prosecutor. To your office?
Or just appoint a special prosecutor. His name is Richard Stout.
Name of Richard Stout.
Teton County.
From Teton County to handle this prosecution.
All seconded.
Seconded, been, seconded. We'll take a vote now. Who's in favor?
Have some discussion. I'm just curious. Here it is. So, is there a dollar amount tied to any of this stuff or not?
Uh, so, no. They, we routinely do this.
Yeah, I know that. I'm just curious to know, though, so.
No, there's not a dollar amount. For example, I was, I was recently appointed special prosecutor on a case out of Laramie County. I reviewed the case. It ultimately needed dismissed, because there were some problems with the case. I did all of that and did not spend a dime of Laramie County's money. And that's generally how these things operate. But if they do, so for example, if Mr. Stout had to come down here for, for a hearing or something else like that, then his mileage could be.
Yeah, but, but it's not like thousands or something.
No, no, because we're not. There are certain circumstances where counties will straight up hire a private attorney to act as a special prosecutor, and in those circumstances, you pay the, you pay the hourly fee of what, whatever that fee arrangement is. But that's, with criminal prosecutions, we generally, we always just kind of handle it for each other throughout the state.
Yeah, no, fair enough. I have no issue.
Okay, so how many hours do you typically have to put into something like this? Like in that case for Laramie County?
Uh, that one in Laramie County, I spent a couple hours reading through paperwork, doing some other, reading through an affidavit, doing some research on it. Mike, our intern, did some research on it as well. So, not a ton of time. I will say that, so for, I'll just give you, for example, when Mr. Stout took office, that would have been beginning of the year. He was a former defense attorney in Teton County, and so he had some conflicts. We handled a variety of conflicts for him. A couple of those cases were pretty extensive. Damon, in my office, handled a couple of aggravated assault cases that took a pretty good chunk of time. But at the same time, we also hand off work to others. It's kind of, yeah. And if we're too busy, if we're too busy, I just don't take them. Because of course, the priority is the work here in Sublet County. It's also interesting, and I mean, sorry, this is where I was gonna say, I was gonna try and blame Mr. Vickery for ma, making my time longer, because he was, he was asking questions, but now it's my fault. I get it. I've no longer brief. But it is, and I lost my train of thought. So, nevermind.
You are still a struggle.
Oh, I, yes, believe me. There's plenty of people who can testify to that, to that aspect. Oh, what I was gonna say is, it's interesting, because this is the space where we wear the hat of the state of Wyoming. So, just as we had talked about, and was noted in my, in my budget report, the state pays fifty thousand of my salary and pays thirty thousand of the deputy's salary. Because we're acting, we're wearing the hat of the state in a criminal prosecution. So, that kind of, kind of falls into that time period, and so we're kind of trading around. We're still, we're all operating on behalf of the state, even though we are a county elected official.
So, so be honest how I asked the question. That's, it's my fault for you going on and on. So, yeah, so how, if you are called to be a special attorney, say for the incident in Evanston over the rough handling of an emu that created its demise by the police officers there, how would you handle that one?
I'm confused.
Police officers handled a, an at-large emu and then the result ended up the emu died. I anticipate the owner of the emu coming back and saying, hey, you guys handled my emu incorrectly. So if you're called as a.
As a special prosecutor.
As a special prosecutor, how are you going to bone up on that one?
Well, first and foremost, I would probably, uh.
Say no, thank you.
Well, yeah, actually, no, that sounds pretty interesting. I'd probably say yes please. And if Loretta is listening, give me a call. No, I'm just kidding. So all kidding aside, i- if that's the city of Evanston that has an issue, then it very well could be a city of Evanston issue and not even rise.
Ah, gotcha, okay, I just.
So who knows? But we do routinely get situations that involve law enforcement action, um, and handle those things for other counties. And you just, you just take the information, you read through it, and you just act like it's just as though it's an affidavit of probable cause that came from your local law enforcement. You just read it through and you just make that charging decision. Um, and if for discussion's sake, if a, if a city employee needs charged with something, they need charged with something.
Yeah.
But if you can find a conflict of interest between an emu and the city employee, that's problem.
If there's a, well, it makes this, well, the point of the conflict is in the, the same as the conflict here. So for example, this individual that we're talking about, the special prosecutor here, is, was a former law enforcement officer. We've worked with that gentleman time and time again. And so the reason the, the conflict exists is that I can't look at that affidavit with a neutral view because I know this individual and I've worked with this individual. And so I'm going to be, it's going to be a subjective biased review of that affidavit. So that's why I bring somebody else. So if, for example, it is a city, city cop in Evanston, if there's a write-up and somebody investigated him for, let's say cruelty to animals for discussion's sake, then the city prosecutor or the county prosecutor there in U N County would inherently have uh, a conflict. And, and I've covered a few different conflict cases for, um, the county attorney there in U N County as well. Uh, when these things come up, one of them was a law enforcement, uh, situation where the sheriff's deputy uh, got charged with trespassing for hunting there in U N County and I covered it, so.
Yeah, well, I just brought a little humor as well.
Well, I'm curious now. I gotta find out about the emu. I'm gonna have to call Loretta and see if I can get a piece of that action.
Well, it's out there, it showed the emu and everything.
Okay.
Before, didn't show him after, did it?
No, it just showed him alive.
Do we know that it's a him?
I don't know. The guy broke his neck, it was bad.
It's a long neck. It seems like it would bend a lot before it would break.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Now that we're back on topic.
Done discussion?
Oh shoot, we're, we're.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
So, uh, no ask for a vote on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? One absent, four oh. All right.
Uh, next up is, uh, that agreement that, I believe you all saw that email from Mr. Pollan. I, I'm sorry, I didn't know that he, he may not have been notified that this actually got put on the agenda. He had sent you all, and, um, I think Mr. White reviewed it. That agreement with the, that memorandum, understanding with, uh, friends of, friends of the Bridger Teton to utilize the hotel tax money for camp hosts. Is there any bells for anybody?
You mean the twenty thousand and twenty?
Yeah, so.
I thought it was clean the bathrooms.
No, it's the, that's a different fee. This one was, they were, um, basically we partnered up with Bridger, Friends of Bridger Teton and I asked Peter to get an MOU with them to specifically, um, govern how those, that money is going to be spent. It's just not going to go into their funding for general operations and or general administration. And, uh, he brought us that MOU, um, was the last meeting or the meeting before. Um, I looked at it, Lynn took it with him. I thought we was going to approve it and I think he just forgot to approve it at that, that meeting. You've looked at that.
I drafted it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I, I never saw it.
I, I, well, I went blank. But what, what do we need to do then?
Well.
We need to approve it so it gets a signature on it.
And we can, you can bump it to next meeting if you need.
Maybe we got something.
Uh, I, I don't, but if you guys have authority, I can, if you get, grant authority to, for you, for you to sign it later, I can print it. You can sign it.
Or we gave them the money.
Uh, all this is, is a document, just making sure we're covered when auditors look at it.
And Clayton, you're okay with it?
Yeah, I drafted it. It just outlines that they are using that money for the purposes of, of compensation for the camp hosts that work at the variety of campgrounds here in, here in Sublet County.
You have a resolution number?
It's not a resolution, it would be.
Make a motion to approve the MOU between us and the friends of Bridger Teton.
That covers it.
Second? Second, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I would just clarify that you're granting Dave, or Vice Chairman Stevens, the authority to sign once I give it to him.
Make that motion, I. Then Vice Chairman Stevens permission to sign it when he sees it.
That's right. Sounds like we're all up to speed. Um, next thing is, uh, two weeks ago, and I believe that, um, Ms. Mueller is online. I don't know if she's there or not. I don't see her.
Who are you looking for?
Lena Mueller. She might not be there. She might have gotten tired of me pontificating on Commissioner Stevens's questions, I might add. So Hospital District, you all met a few weeks back, uh, reviewed this. There was one point, uh, in the agreement that you all wanted to up, get updated. That was on the potential rental amount, monthly rental dollar amount for the public health, the current space the public health is in, in the event that in two years, the county still needs to utilize that same space. Um, in the prior agreement, it was listed as twenty-five hundred a month. I have asked, and I'm following that, following that meeting, um, to update it and they have agreed and they've already approved it and signed off on it, that that will be a negotiated amount with a cap of twenty-five hundred. I believe I spoke to most of you about this, uh, about this issue offline. Um, this is the updated Hospital District addendum to the transfer agreement. This is the, the writing that confirms the decision that you made a few weeks back at that Marbleton Special Meeting to, uh, take the property, commonly known as the proactive building, um, and this would finalize that transaction.
So there's no set amount? Could even end up being twenty-five?
With a cap, so it's capped. It's a negotiated amount at that point.
What would we have to negotiate? Where are they going in the building? And what would we have to? What, what choice we have if they set a figure? I don't see, I don't see how there'd be any negotiations.
Well, these, these two parties, uh, the county and the hospital district have a long history uh, and would have a continuing history moving forward. For discussion's sake, one point where, um, the county retains leverage over the, over, retains leverage for bargaining power for discussion's sake, um, would be in approving a resolution to go on the ballot to increase their, um, their mail levy for discussion's sake. This is one.
Come up with a figure. I, I misunderstood that you, not a, not a cap. Go ahead, somebody else. Well, we could still be stuck at that, but we'd like to think they'll, I would think they'll deal with us better than that. So it gives us the ability to discuss that number when the day comes.
I'd like to think we have Jan on a permanent hold before two years is up even, but and we don't have to worry about it, but if we do, like he's a pretty good negotiator, just sick him on.
I don't think we'll have any negotiating power. Okay, so, I mean, I don't know. What would we have?
Aspen Grove.
Well, yeah, but how long's that contract good for in Aspen Grove?
They need your approval before they can increase rent amounts.
Oh, I know that, but I mean. That's been in there before this, so.
Well, no, but you could just simply not approve rental agreements and just say you're going to bring us down to a dollar a month if you ever want to have rent to go up in Aspen Grove. There's plenty of leverage points.
Well, will the, will this improvement get the, uh, deed transferred?
Yes, the plan is that we're going to close on August first. Um, and we'll finalize that on the time count.
Well, if, if that occurs, I'm for this. I want, I want this deal done.
So I'd make a motion to approve the amendment to the deed transfer, which gives us negotiating power on twenty-five hundred dollar cap if so needed in two years.
Yeah, seconded.
Okay, motion been made, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass four zero one.
Yes, sir. Again, for the record, Mr. Stevens is not complaining about.
He's happy, happy to be doing it. Oh, yeah.
We're going to have to order you up a stamp. I can see that right now.
Anticipation. Yes. And what, what Biden getting trouble for? Have you got a, what do you stamp? Auto pin going there?
I'm just right for. Okay. So we've got that done and done. Last thing, and this just came up, I was handed this, um, by Clerk Rice. Uh, this is the contract that finalizes the Chip Seal project. Um, I've reviewed it. It's on the standard form that I had already previously approved. And so there's two lines for signatures, one for Lynn Bernard and one for, um, Ms. Rice.
Oh, this is something not need voted on.
Uh, it does need voter to approve. You guys have already done the contract and everything else.
Need motion to disperse payment for work.
Uh, well, it's not dispersing payments, it's just to sign the contract for the.
I make a motion to approve the agreement between Sublet County and eight key contractors for their two thousand twenty-five chip seal project within the county. Second?
All seconded.
Most have been made, seconded. Uh, all in favor?
So Clayton? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Did you have something to say about this?
No.
So.
Uh, I'm just wondering, we've got all this stuff in here about the equitable sharing agreement with the sheriff. What's that about? What's that one about?
Say again?
Well, this equitable sharing agreement and certification, do we do anything with that? It's here. Pardon?
They, that was under Emily, but I don't know if they just, they forgot at the end of the meeting discussion or. That was under.
Well, it, here's the front page, that's all I'm curious to know about.
Um, I don't know. I, I'm sorry, Mr., uh, uh, Mr. Vice Chairman, Commissioner Stevens, I mean, Commissioner Vickery, I don't know what this is.
Well, then should we not make a decision on it until we do, you suppose?
I'm gonna go ahead and sit down.
Yeah.
For the record, my time is up.
Okay. God, my paper back, please.
Treasury report.
Okay, so equitable sharing, sorry. Mr. Chairman, equitable sharing is a, um, program that the Sheriff's Department, um, uses to get some kinds of reimbursements on, um, criminal cases. So if they seize a vehicle or property and it was a federal case and they are involved with, with, um, federal law enforcement, they do an application through the feds, um, and then they decide, and it usually takes a year before the feds give back any of those funds if we do have something that, um, that they agree would be a portion of ours. And so this is just an annual, uh, certification that has to be signed by the chairman. We have to reapply every year in July. So that's all this is. It shows the amount that we got, um, this last year. Those, yeah, it's, it's not very much. And that was actually from a case in, I think, two thousand twenty is how long it. The only one we have outstanding right now is from two thousand seventeen. I don't know if we'll get paid that or not, but if, this is just a signature for this year's certification. Um, those funds that are, um, gotten from the equitable sharing program through the feds are funds that can only be used for certain things. So they can be used for special cases, um, they can't be used for salary, they can't be used for anything that's a regular payment. So I think last year, they pooled all the equitable sharing funds that they had collected over the years and I think they bought a vehicle last year, so.
So what's the eight million fiscal budget?
That's the budget for the Sheriff's Department.
So the ending equitable, let me see if I get this right, ending equitable sharing funds balance of nineteen hundred and twelve dollars. Is, is that what's the Sheriff Department gets? Is that how that works?
Yep.
That's after they bought their car.
Right. Yeah, Casey, um, Sheriff Lear has already signed it for this year, so this is just a, um, formality really. If I sign online for you, I just like to actually have a signature that says, yes, we do want to apply for being a participant in the equitable sharing program again this year, so.
Among the motions, Sublet County participates in equitable, equitable sharing agreement. Begin here. Do we have a second? Motion been made, seconded. So I'll ask all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Four zero. One absent. Thank you.
Um, so when I go online and upload this, Mr. Chairman, Acting Chairman, do you want me to put your name on it or would you prefer, uh, Mr. Bernard?
Save my, today, my name, not that I want it on there, but I.
Okay.
And attach his cell phone number too.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Emily. I had no idea what it was. Appreciate it.
All right, uh, how about Janice? I administrator update.
Unlike Clayton, I don't have a problem being short. So. I will be very brief. Um, since your last meeting, um, I have been, I, I attended the NACO conference um, with Commissioner White. I don't know if Commissioner White would like to share a report of that now or in old business? Or how would you like to handle that?
Sure, share a report. So Janice and I had the privilege to go to the great state of Pennsylvania, specifically Philadelphia, and attend, uh, attend the NACO conference where I sit on Energy and Environmental Committee. Janice sits on a Public Lands Committee. Um, we went to the Public Lands. We did, uh, cut our visit a little short to get back here for, um, appointing the new Sublet County Clerk, so we didn't see the last part of it. Um, didn't vote on the new NACO, NACO thing, little update out of, uh, out of my committee. Um, the, the one thing that was very interesting that, uh, we, so how these committees work is we vote on different proposals for NACO to go and advocate for all the counties um, within the, uh, the United States, including Hawaii. And one of the, the proposals that was brought before us, um, Wyoming, Utah, Montana, Louisiana was voting against it, but the, the proposal was that, uh, um, counties and municipalities be allowed to sue um, oil and gas operators and or mine operators, mineral operators for bad weather events that happen due to climate change. for bad weather events that happen due to climate change. Um. Learned pretty quick that our three states don't have a lot of, a lot of voice on that. We got, uh, we got slaughtered. Um, but we'll see what NACO comes back with when they do, cause that's, uh, that's something pretty hard to advocate for. Especially when you, uh, um, look at the main carbon output, you know, China still leads us, um, followed by, um, a couple of other countries. Significant amounts compared to what the United States puts, um, in the air as far as carbon, so. That was, that one was the interesting one. The rest of them pretty much align with everything that, uh, um, the new administration's putting out and or I feel what Sublet County belief is as far as, um, responsible development of minerals.
Thank you.
That give a good update on mine?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, uh, in the Public Lands Committee, there were lots of topics. We had a, a host of, um, resolutions that we discussed, and as he said, as those resolutions pass, then there's a body that considers those resolutions and NACO can adopt those and advocate on, on our behalf for those resolutions, but um, one thing that I would report out of that is, um, as you know, uh, the the NEPA environment is changing, environment so to speak, um, and new rules are being written by agencies. Um, there's some concern that perhaps in writing those rules, maybe cooperating agencies aren't going to have the same input that they did have, so there's definitely discussion about ensuring that cooperating agencies are as involved as in the past. They talked about the process, um, you know, that it, it's the intent in part is to streamline that process, so those those NEPA analyses don't take so long. Anything that's in the works right now will be under the old process unless they wanna do a public no- notice to apply to be part of the new process, so. It's changing. We'll see where that goes. We also talked about the potential revocation of the roadless rule, um, which I'm sure you are all familiar with. Um. There were some presentations by up and coming sort of AI early detectors of, uh, fire, which we have in place in our county, some cameras that would have that capability. It's just a question of getting through the liability issues, um, of turning on that capability for the county. So I, I think um, our fire chief and perhaps our county attorney will be looking into that, but they are, there are some installed here that were free of cost to us. Um. Let's see, there were some FCC discussions about nine one one, which I will kind, I will get in touch with Casey. I, I imagine they're fully aware of some of the concerns with updating nine one one. As you know, there's the next gen. I, I imagine it is encompassing all of those requirements. Um, lots of discussion about PILTS and PILT funding and calculations on PILT and SRS, all the things you would expect, um, but it was, uh, it was very productive. To me, the DC trip where you get to go to the agencies, if, if there came a time when you had to choose that one where you're going to the agencies and speaking directly to the people who are in decision-making positions, that to me is more beneficial, but this is beneficial to the county, in my opinion.
Oh, I'd like to add a couple more things too. One thing that was brought up during this conference that was kind of hot off the press, um. So with Trump's executive orders back to all the secretaries, um, he, he basically took CEQ out of being the, the presiding officer on how NEPA is administrated across the board. And he assigned each of those departments to come up with their own plan of how NEPA was gonna be um, administered through their departments. Um, two days before we, we got their Department of, uh, um, Interior DOI rolled out their plan, um, which in that executive order, it also asked that they take into consideration timeframes and, and basically the goal was um, an EIS to take no more than thirty days and an EA to take no more than fifteen days. Well, Department of Interior, when they rolled out their plan for NEPA, um, it appears tried to take cooperating agency status out of their NEPA, which would directly affect us at being able to be, um, at the table for those decisions, so. Not sure where that one's gonna go, just something to be on everybody's radar, um, on that. Um. When Janice and I went, we went a day early to attend the IT training, um, and, and all the new stuff coming from information and technology and the new stuff coming out about, uh, chat GPT, AI, um, and, and the tool that, uh, that that's becoming, um, allowing governments, basically bodies like us to utilize uh, uh, some sort of AI platform to, uh, to get more out of your employees, um, to where they wouldn't have to do something. So saying that, um, I would like to explore that more, set up a subcommittee of people. Um, use our, our line item that we have in the budget. I think it's forty five thousand dollars, right, Janice, for employee improvement?
Yeah, professional developments in your general.
I would like to set up a subcommittee of people just to explore the options of what introducing AI into the hands of some of our employees would, uh, would do. I know take for Janice, for example, um, I, I participate, I have AI at work where I can upload a full document in there and have it start dissecting that document like the Rock Springs R and P plan where it cuts hours of, you know, reading out of it. It cuts hours of research and and trying to find supporting documents and or looking up supporting documents, um. I also think that it, you know, could help. I mean, imagine having a, a professional English professor in your back pocket as far as checking your, um, validus of your reports and or any clerical errors that you might have in one reports to others. So I think this has potential to, um, free up a lot of employees' times to where we could, uh, um, use them for for different things, um, different aspects, so. I would request to the board that, uh, um, we allow to, to start forming some subcommittee, put some costs together and plan together to come back and present to this board.
Oh, I like the idea. It's coming and we ought to start getting our hands around it. It's here and we, there's a lot of positive uses to it.
And that's a thing right now, you're right. I mean, in reality, we probably have several county employees that are using the free version. The problem with the free version is that is the platform that these companies are rolling out for AI to teach themselves, to teach themselves how to get better. So there is no protection of that information. When you're using that free version, um, that, that information is worldwide and used by these companies to teach themselves on how to get better. Um. Part of this subcommittee would also be developing a um, set of rules on how AI is to be used and how it isn't to be used. One is that education, you know, that hey, we got, uh, we got rules, um, that we have to follow, especially in the Sheriff's Office, especially when it comes to employees and, and records of how that needs to be still secured information.
So how would you filter the individuals that you want this subcommittee to be comprised of?
Don't know that yet, Doug. I'm, I'm just gonna, I don't know how we would filter that. I would just throw it out to first to see, hey, who would be interested in, in doing this? Um, I would highly rely on, I would hope that Clayton um, would be interested in his office as far as writing up, you know, how this is gonna the, the rules and policies of it. I would definitely like Janice to be involved, cause I think it would help her tremendously. Um, I, I, I think we just open it up to elected officials and say, hey, would you guys even be interested in in doing something or standing, standing something like this up and exploring options?
Yeah, I, I concede the validity to it, even though I'm not one of those individuals, but the downside of it too is somebody that's got mayhem on their mind, I'll put it like that. So that's the ones that I'm talking about, being able to filter out circumstance that on the surface is the positive, but there's always seems like always a negative side to everything positive, unfortunately, and that when you, when you have a group put together and somebody's I'm not pointing fingers, I'm just saying there's always somebody trying to figure out a way to skew the system, if you would. Skew, I said skew, S K E W, skew. And I just. So you know.
There's no R.
Yeah. So that, and that's why I said the, of, of filter, so to speak, of the individuals that.
Yep, and I, I agree with you a hundred percent. And so what this would do is once once we establish and, and we create a, a account with whatever AI that we do, we control that information, right? That information, so now anybody that uses that platform, that information is still owned by Sublet County, still controlled by Sublet County. We still are the deciding, so somebody can't just go dump a whole bunch of stuff in there thinking that they're bucking the system because we already have developed those sideboards of that information going in there. We still have ultimate control over that. Where we don't have control right now is that same person could use some online version and, and do that, dump that in there, and, and we don't have any policy set in place saying, hey, we catch you doing that, we catch you doing something like that. Um. One, it's not right. Two, you could lose your job. So I think if we jumping into it, setting up the sideboards of it, where we control that information is step one of making sure that we're doing as much as we can to protect ourselves from those rogue characters, potential rogue characters, not saying that anybody in Sublet County would do that. I don't think we have anybody that would do that, but you never know.
Well, I, I think the idea of go on, starting with the, the, the elected officials is a good idea. That's a good way to start and then see where it goes from there. And. Have to start somewhere.
Have to start somewhere.
No. But it would appear to me it's gonna be a more than a two-minute task. It's gonna create.
Oh, it's, it's, it's gonna be a great undertaking.
Yeah, it will be. Okay, no, I'm, I'm, sounds reasonable enough to me.
I'd, I'd like to have it, if two commissioners want to be on it, I volunteer myself to, to head it up, but I'd love to have at least a second set of eyes.
Well, I can tell you. I'd be the last one of the four or five commissioners you'd want on it, because I, I just don't understand that stuff and I'm too old to start learning it. Or I think I am anyway, so.
My goal is I'm gonna have you using AI by the end of this, um, year.
Yeah, well, you know, I've often said artificial intelligence starts in Washington DC. There's a lot of those folks back there.
Okay.
Mr.
What else you got first?
Vice Chairman, you may already be using AI and not know it, just because it's out there. Um. As a follow-up to the comment about the changes and how involved cooperating agencies may be, I wanted to let you guys know that I did attend the one-on-one meeting with our force supervisor. And I just want to assure you that they are appreciative and um, accepting of and just willing to participate with our cooperating, with their cooperating agencies to the extent that they're spending their time in a one-on-one basis, so just wanted to let you know that. Um, I attended part of the POPO meeting. I ended up leaving it partway through and coming over, um, to work on the transition with the Clerk's Office. Uh, I don't know if you wanna save that till we're getting, we're getting late. You might wanna hold that till after, um.
You guys want a quick update on the POPO meeting that I just attended?
Sure.
So, so POPO, um, as you, as you guys know, was set up when the Record of Decision for Development of the Pine Dell Anacline was put into place. And, and they tried something new with this, this rod. They, they tried to do a mitigation account for wildlife affected by this development. Um, how this was funded, there was approximately thirty five million dollars put into this account. Um, and then, uh, a representative from Sublet County appointed by the governor, which I, I represent you guys on that. I took Joel's place when he left. Um, Department of Ag has a, as a position on it. Um, DEQ has a position on it. Wyoming Game and Fish has a position on it. And the BLM holds a, a voting position on it. This, this program was funded by every well that was sputted on the Pine Dell Anacline, um. The operators would pay a seventy five hundred dollar fee into this fund meant to, um, for projects to mitigate, um, potential thing that happened to the wildlife, right? So, um, as you guys know, this, this funding, um, is dropping down. They had, uh, DEQ was pulling a salary out of it. Game and Fish was pulling a salary out of it. Um, Department of Ag was pulling a salary out of this fund to fund a, a person to help boots on the ground on it. Um. Along with, uh, I already said the DEQ, Department of Ag and the BLM, right? So everybody was pulling a salary out of it. So this meeting, um, where we see that these funding isn't where it needs to be, basically, we're down to about half a million dollars into that. We were paying about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars in salaries um, to do it and trying to also on top of that fund projects that, that would come in that made sense. This year, um, had really long talks about the, uh, the longevity and the sustainability of this fund and how we were gonna do projects and continue to do projects on the Pine Dell Anacline with that lack of funding. So at the end of the day, Game and Fish, um, de- decided that they were no longer gonna draw a salary out of this fund. They were gonna bring that internal along with the department, the DEQ, along with the BLM, um. The, uh, the Department of Ag, how that funding worked for them is they would request seventy five thousand dollars a year out of that funding where they would basically third-party contract back through our conservation district to provide that boots-on-the-ground supervision of any projects that the Department of Ag was trying to push through. So at the end of the day, that one got approved, so the Department of Ag still has a seventy five thousand dollar draw on that. Along with that money, we have the, the normal things that the rod requires us to do every year, which is a lot of the mule deer, um, studies, the sound studies for, um, sage grouse and other things. So, long story short, not before you guys, we approved that one salary and no projects. Just go around, task the BLM to go back to the drawing board on exactly what that rod requires and exactly what your annual requirement for finances to fulfill the basic um, limits of that Record of Decision. And, uh, we will reevaluate where we look at in November at our next meeting if we can afford to do any projects before we do. So, long story short, any questions on, uh, the POPO? And Janice, that's what you saw and everything, right? Did I miss anything that?
Yes, and you may think that was not a long story short, but it was a long meeting and that was very condensed, so.
So, so the thirty five million initially that was or that's been in there, it's drawn down to what, basically?
Basically, we're drawing down to half a million dollars left in that account right now.
Wow.
You guys still put seventy five hundred in every well you spud?
Still put seventy five hundred dollars in every well that we spud, and we're anticipating somewhere between twenty and thirty wells a year right now. Um, Jonah, of course, they picked up that rig and they got seven wells on the docket for it right now. Don't know what's gonna happen after that, depending on commodity prices. Anything that happens outside of, um, which actually Jonah's in the JIO, so they're already, the, their spud fees don't count. This is only the Pine Dell Anacline. And the Blue Spruce stuff doesn't account for this either. It was not part of that Record of Decision. Any questions on that? Hello?
Just briefly, Mr. Vice Chairman, I attended the Bridger-Teton Open House for about an hour. It was well set up. I don't know how much attendance they anticipated. It was a reasonable cross-section of the community. I don't feel like there were a ton of people there, but I was, you know, it was a diverse cross-section from my perspective. Seemed to have gone well. And then last but not least, Janice Lee asked me to let you know of public health office closures. Um, they'll be closing it. They have some scheduled times for off-site clinics again and to put it on public record. And we have put it on the website, um, August twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, they'll be closed from eight AM to eleven AM for the Pine Dell Community Blood Draw. September nineteenth, they'll be closed in the afternoon for the Health Fair at Rendezvous Point. September twenty-third and twenty-fourth, they'll be closed from eight to eleven AM for the Pine Dell School Blood Draw. And October second, they'll be closed all day for the drive-through flu clinic at the Mountain Men Museum. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have for you. If I would stand for any questions.
Questions? All right.
All right, thank you.
You took a lot of notes. I, I was seeing him there. All right, anything else? Want to break for lunch? Anybody? All right.
I do that.
Break for lunch and be back at one o'clock.
Plus some other stuff with it, so if she wants to come forward.
That's a nine footer?
Okay, if you want to come forward, we'll roast you up here.
Make sure your mic is on.
So we'll turn over you and what you know and learned since we last seen you.
Okay, so Haley has accepted the position. So she's just here to talk to you guys about start dates and what it's going to look like until.
Close to one of those, I hope they're on.
Well, thank you everyone for this opportunity. I'm pretty excited to get started with the county. I feel like it's been, I don't know, just a lot to take in this last week. And thank you Andrea for your help with everything too, I really appreciate it. But yes, Andrea and I talked today just about the transition, me starting to transition into the position. And wanted to talk with you guys about that and share some thoughts with you and get some feedback.
So I guess the main topic is when you can start and what you can fill in between now and then.
Yes, so just based off of my current obligations that I need to wrap up this summer. Really early September, September 2nd, just since the first is a holiday, I think. We were thinking September 2nd would be my start date and then between now and September 2nd. I could work with Alan, work kind of help fill in, do some training, start some of the HR paperwork. If I need to attend meetings, I can do that as well. But then during that first couple of weeks of September, it just might be a little bit more. Trying to transition some during that first couple of weeks. Just because I have a couple, I have a day that I need to take off right away in the beginning on the 13th. But the thought was start on the 2nd and between now and then. Work closely with Alan and try to coordinate with him on some training and whenever meetings come up.
So probably what you'll need to do too is not only work with Alan, but then your gene, some days you do work. So both of you are on the same page on that, so. And like I say, you all have to work it out, Alan, so you're kind of covered and, you know. So, so you're talking it will be an hourly wage just through the month of August, whatever hour she works with, pay her an hourly wage.
Agreed to her.
And that's what you'll kind of have to keep track of.
We have a program built up for you.
Okay.
So, so one thing I'd like to see in this transition time is you and Helen, because Tess is leaving.
Yes.
To, one, go over the requirements for that job position, make sure everything looks like what you guys think on it. And let's move forward on trying to get somebody hired sooner rather than later if we can find the right candidate that we put in for it.
So are we good to go ahead and post for that position? I do have a sample I was going to give you to look at. She hasn't looked at it yet, Alan has looked at it, I don't know if you guys want to copy.
No, I don't need one, I'm good, I got one.
Obviously I'd sit down with her too, if there was something she wanted to change and we can change what goes to, whatever. Like just, this is what we came up with.
So clarify me, so you've got one possible already or two?
Someone did, well, just one, someone applied thinking that they were applying for this position and it was really when we had posted Dennis's. So I did let her know that I would, as soon as we were posting, I would let her know. But I do think we'll get more, yeah.
I think need to post it, what do you think? Yeah, getting it posted, yeah.
Okay, so as soon as you are comfortable with what's on there.
Okay.
And if you want to talk to Alan too.
Yeah, I'll catch up with Alan. Tess, when does Tess's post date?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay.
Oh, Thursday, I'm on, I'm a day late, sorry, I knew it was Thursday, I was just thinking today was Wednesday for some reason. So, yeah, so you can.
Okay, one question.
I have a question. Chairman, so after this Haley and I will select a candidate that we prefer. Do we have a salary range or?
We discussed that lightly.
Yeah, I mean, I was thinking the same as what would be hired in like the clerk's office or the treasurer's office or even the assessors. They usually start around A2, A3, and I can go over that with you.
So we don't have to come back before this board?
Do you have an issue with this board, young man? Just wondering. Anything else, any questions?
No, I'd definitely like to look, because it looks like we're going to have a month there with you and Helen being kind of intermittent in that office, you know. Look at different options far as, you know, if we're in a, in a position where we need to reach out, borrow an employee from another department as a temporary something. Just making sure the work still is somehow being covered during that time.
Okay, I can help with that.
I appreciate your possibility.
Yeah, you know, Sam brings up a valid point, if 20 hours a week, things will run down to a halt if I don't have an assistant office, you know. I've got like nine safety inspections that could take, you know, eat up a whole week if nothing happens towards a preliminary plaid approval or additional use. So it's important to get somebody, I mean, because Haley is just, you know, swinging in. Get somebody, I mean, because Haley is just, you know, swinging in for four or five hours a week. That's great to get her trained up on things. Really need to have Tess within valuable there.
So things are pretty busy in there?
Yeah, they really are.
And maybe it's something simple is, you know, we can post a number, maybe they can call you Andrea when. That office is vacant, just so we're not getting called up and. Beat on because office happens to be closed and we work out some, hey, please bear with us through this transition time. We are working on this, you know, maybe we could come up with some agreement that, yeah, we will be open or somebody will be in that office. This time to come in and answer any of your questions and or take care of business. I mean, basically all options are on the table, right? Whatever you guys come up with.
And if there's any way when you leave the office, if you can post hours, you think you'll be back. There's nothing more aggravating than coming from the south end of the county and getting a. Closed sign and you don't know when, when somebody will be there.
That might be, generally eight to 12.
Maybe we post something on Facebook and our website about making appointments or something.
Yeah, just, just for this transition time until we can get back in fully staff.
Sounds good. Do you have any more questions?
Welcome aboard.
Got a lot of questions.
Okay. Wait till next meeting. Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Make sure you get that onboarding paperwork signed so she can't leave.
Do you have time to talk to Alan real quick and then if you guys can let me know if there's something you want to.
Okay, what else you got first?
All right, it's our plan documents. We have brokers from Tegler's and Novo here.
Hi.
How are you?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'd like to also introduce you to Trey Bradley. He works for Novo Connection. They are the firm that we work with on basic stop loss insurance and he was able to join us at a very, very interesting call.
Welcome, Trey.
Thank you.
Apologize it and have these in your package. We're a little ahead of schedule. Something I'm going to get them out to you.
I don't think any relation.
I was going to say, real good last name.
A lot of my family, I was born in Riverton, a lot of family over in Riverton, Lander area.
Yeah, probably no review.
I'm sure, yeah.
All right. Can everybody hear me okay?
Oh, yeah.
We do. Okay, excellent. Well, good afternoon, Commissioners of the Board. Thank you for having us in today to discuss the health plan stop loss policy that is renewing September 1st, 2025. So we're here today with our recommendations and results of the policy marketing that we have just completed. So within your packet, we're going to kind of roll through some of the, the basics of the stop loss policy. And the self-funded health plan and how this all comes together and then we'll have a couple of decisions at the end. Okay, so just as a, a quick overview of the health plan, we're on the, and I apologize, there's no page numbers on there, but health plan overview. So just as a quick reminder, the Sublet County Health Plan is self-funded. Which means that the county pays all medical and pharmacy claims for employees and their families up to a certain threshold. And then the stop loss insurance is what protects the county from significant losses beyond that point. So that's what we're here discussing today is the stop loss policy that covers catastrophic risk for the county. So we're going to go through the different. Components of the self-funded health plan, but your key cost drivers in the plan are going to be your claims paid. That is the majority of the planned spend you're going to see are the claims for the members. The fixed costs, which are your stop loss premiums, TPA fees through Blue Cross Blue Shield to administer the plan. Prescription management fees for the benefit manager and other programs and that the county employees have access to. So I've laid out a chart of the cost components of the self-funded health plan, just as a helpful reference. To kind of identify each of the. The pieces and parts that make up the health plan and what category those all fall into. So we're going to, I'm going to take your attention to the stop loss overview page. So again, the stop loss insurance policy protects the county for significant losses. So this is going to kind of lay out the terms of that policy and why it's important. So if you look at midway through the page, contract terms. And we have all the categories listed and the current column of the 24, 25 year as well as the renewal. The MGU is the managing underwriter. That's kind of like a third party we access the policies through. And then the stop loss carrier themselves is the policy. It is the insurance. Third-party administrator, specific deductible, 90,000. So what that means is after the county has paid one member's claims of 90,000. The stop loss insurance would cover anything additional unless otherwise specified by the stop loss carrier. There's also an additional 75,000 that the county has to fulfill before reimbursements, which is just another layer of risk. That the county takes on in lieu of trading it for premiums. And then. Medical and RX are included in the specific coverage that you see above and then the aggregate coverage that covers the group. From total losses over a certain point. You'll see at the bottom that the current enrollment of the plan, you have 59 employee onlys and you have 124 covered with their family. For a total of 183 medical lives on the county's health plan currently. So all, all figures beyond this point are based on those counts. Okay. I'm very used to talking to the microphone. Okay, so we're onto the page that says fixed costs. So these are the plan costs that are stable. These don't change other than based on your enrollment. And these are going to include the stop loss premiums first. So you'll see there the breakdown of the per employee charge per month for the stop loss insurance for the. 2024 plan year as well as the renewal cost. On the far right. So we are seeing an increase of cost of 103,000 in stop loss premiums. This is due to increased risk as well as increased cost of. Members currently on the plan with known medical diagnosis. So this is going to be the most significant increase that you'll see throughout the plan components. And this is also renewing with a different carrier and we'll talk more about that, but. Ultimately, this policy best suits the county's needs and it would be in line with what the renewal would have been from the incumbent carrier. So the stop loss premiums are captured up above for a total of 402,000 currently moving up to 506,000. A total increase of 103,000 in stop loss premiums. Midway down, you're going to see the administrative costs. And these are all of the different program fees that are from Blue Cross Blue Shield, Novo Benefits, Tegler. The telehealth coverage for the employees to get virtual care. An organ transplant rider, which also is very valuable for the county because transplants are very expensive. Anywhere from 400,000 to 1.2 million. So this policy would catch one of those if that was to ever happen. And then also an analytics fee that will be built in for another program that I know has come up in discussion already. But will be very helpful in offsetting some of the costs on the plan currently. So the administrative fee per employee per month, that's what that P E P M means, is going from 115. To 122, so an increase per employee of $7.05 per month. And then when you look at that for 183 medical lives, the total cost is currently at 253,287. Increasing to 268, 768. So a 6.1 increase, just a little over $15,000 a year. So pretty minimal in the administrative cost category. But then when you look at the total. The total of both items in the fixed. Category, you're looking at stop loss premiums and all the administrative fees, the total is 6,000 or 655,000. Currently increasing to 775,000. So total increase in fixed costs of 119,000. Okay, so I'm going to take a quick pause right there. There's a lot of numbers. There's a lot of moving parts. Is there any questions yet so far on any of the fees or any of the? Information we've covered? All right, excellent. Okay, so. Fixed costs are just as they say, they're stable based on your enrollment. The variable costs are the claims. So as you move on to the next page, this is the, the part that's a little harder to predict because we don't. Always know into the future what an employee or their family may need or what may change for someone. So the underwriters go through your current employee base and their families and determine what kind of medical funding they would need for. Support throughout the year. And so that's where you come in with the expected claims. So it breaks it down per employee per month, what claims funding is. Suggested to carry what they expect to happen in claims. But they also know that things could go as unexpected. So they build in a corridor of 25%. To help account for that. So essentially, if you look at the expected cost claims category. And the maximum claims category, you will run somewhere in between that. So currently for 2024, they expected your claims to be somewhere between 3.1 million and 3.9 million. Those claim picks have gone up just slightly in the renewal to 3.5 million, up to 4.4 million. About three quarters of the way down the page, you're going to see a blue bar that says additional claims liability. The stock loss underwriters will also indicate any individuals that they expect to have costs exceeding the $90,000 deductible. And they will place a laser on those individuals. And that means that they will require that the county pays higher claims on those individuals before providing you reimbursements. So we had three members with a laser totaling an additional 160, currently up to 200,000. For the renewal. And then just detailing out that aggregating specific again, which is just another bucket of risk that the county will have to fulfill before stop loss reimbursements are eligible. From the policy. So your maximum claims cost on the renewal is going up from 4.2 million to 4.7 million with an 11.5% increase. And just keeping in mind, those are variable. So those could come in lower than expected and that's what we always hope to see, but they could never be in excess of the maximum listed.
So Tiffany?
Yes.
On our, on our current, where it says total expected claims of that 3.187?
Yes.
Was that actual numbers that we spent or have we compared in the, for the 2024, what the actual claims were?
Sam, that's a good question. That's what they expected for this year. Because the year hasn't been completed fully. We have a trajectory of about a little over 80% of what you're running at currently. So basically you're on track to meet the expected claims and Trey, you're willing to.
No, I see. So where you're at, right now, we just received your June claims data. Because when an individual goes into a hospital, it takes anywhere from 30 days longer for that claim to actually reach. Your third-party administrator. So claims do lag by about 30 days. We just received June data. Since your plan doesn't end until right at 8:31, we're projecting out, but what we're, how we're tracking throughout the year, you're expected to end right on top of that 3.1.
Perfect. And so then the, so I understand the 125% of that is just. You're, you're expecting, hey, something, something happens, let's add additional 25%, so we know what that number looks like.
Yeah, so that's your, yeah, that's your maximum, that 3.9 number. And the reason that they do that is you have what's called aggregate insurance. So you're talking about how the county covers the first, any individuals up to the first 90,000. And then you also have aggregate coverage, which means if all 189 individuals reached their 90,000. To keep the risk off the county for that large risk, they cap it with an aggregate for the entire plan can only reach. The $3.9 million in cumulative claims before the losses are stopped.
And then so I understand the laser, lasered employees, on top of that, they're a higher risk. Employee that would be the additional 160, is that per employee up to $200,000 per employee or can you guys walk me through that?
Do you want to take that?
Yeah.
So a laser is, we know that that individual is going to exceed, be based on their claims experience, exceed the 90,000. So insurance is for anything of unknown risk. Because those are individuals that we do know are going to have higher risk, we have two options. Option one is to include them with the $90,000 specific deductible with the rest of the plan. But your premiums that we saw on the previous page and your fixed costs have to increase significantly to cover that known risk. The other option is to laser those individuals out. They have their own specific deductible. So instead of 90,000 that the county has to meet. They have a higher pick. Two of your individuals have a $100,000 currently. Specific deductible that the county pays that first 100,000 and then their losses are stopped. The reason that we like to do the lasering risk, a lot of times that is something that's maybe more considered to be risky. But if that individual for any reason decides to take another job somewhere else, or they don't have their claims actually reach that 100,000. You've paid less in premium because they're not counted with everyone else and their claims are, are lower already. So you can really only win, you know, and here what we're showing is your, your max number that you could potentially pay.
Okay.
So we had three members with lasers. One was 140,000 and then two other members had just an additional 10,000 on top of the 90.
And that's for a specific condition as well. So if that individual breaks their arm or has similar accident, that's not counting towards their own other. Deductible, it's only, it's specific to their case as well.
Perfect. Then one other question for either Tiffany or Trey. Back to the fixed cost. So the employees are only going to see on the average that $7.05 increase on theirs.
So everything?
Yeah, on that one. So is this what the employees pay per month right now, whether they're a group? And then this $7.05, that's what the employees see and then the county is going to see this 18.2% increase. Am I looking at that correct?
Good question. It's an increase to the cost per employee, but it's not something currently the county is passing on. The county has the contribution set at no cost for a single or employee only coverage, $50 if you add one person and then $100. Is it correct?
It's 50 for spouse, 50 for all children. So the most they pay out is 100. That's not changing.
So that'll stay the same. So then county's taking 18.2% of, I'm reading that right, increase this year on the fixed cost side of it, right?
Correct. And that's where the county does have the ability to adjust what the employees pay at, at your discretion. And that, that hasn't been changed in a long time. It's, you know, just kind of preference. On how and when that happens, you know, obviously costs are going up, so it may be a good discussion point. But it's also not going to bring a lot of money back into the plan. But just for the employees, for the administrative costs, because for all of those things aside from claims. So basically, and I wish I had a different breakdown and I could share one. So all of these go in to make a composite rate. To where like each single employee costs X number dollars per month at expected claims funding each family would. And all of these numbers add into that cost. And that's what the county would pay per employee per month, but what you charge them is. At your discretion.
Yes, all of these costs go into, this is the total budget and from there we split out what the county's portion is and what the employees' portion. So they're not listed as what the employees pay in these numbers. This is going towards the total budget number.
Makes sense. Last, last question.
Oh, no, you're good.
Did Gerber put back in for it that their costs just come in extremely high or did they just say, we don't want to deal with Sublet County anymore? When we moved on to standard?
No, they, they did put in a renewal number and they were very close and comparable. And Gerber is actually not where we saw the issues. Their MGU, which is actually UME, they're, they're who's writing and doing the risk for them. They're a carrier that's in the marketplace. They came in relatively new and with very aggressive rates. They have a couple of different ways that they do business that. ways that they do business that isn't maybe necessarily greatly looked upon in the marketplace. One of them is for you to get your reimbursements back for when an individual does exceed your ninety thousand dollar spec deductible. They are more in the, take you on the stance that they're going to try to find a reason not to pay. And so that's more of an administrative headache that we've seen. So we have tried to move away from them in the business. They've been a good carrier for you. We just see that based on some of the programs that you're wanting to implement in some of your policies, making a change to standard life MLBV is the best choice without really a change in costs. So they were very comparable, which made it attractive to make a, a change, a lateral change to a better carrier at that point.
What's better administrative side of it by moving to standard?
Yep.
But it wasn't like Gerber had a cheaper rate.
No, they were right on top. You were looking, your total difference was a, their Gerber was an eleven point nine percent increase. Standard life was a twelve point four. So you're about a point five percent difference for a better chance of getting your claims paid through on, on future. And if anything, those, those come up for issues.
Thanks for that.
Yeah.
And we've never had any pushback on reimbursements for the county, but we have seen it in a couple other client groups, and we just would prefer not to take that risk if we do have a lateral option to move to. So that was, that was very refreshing that standard life came in good this year because last year we just really didn't have any other options, or we would have actually talked about this last year.
They also had an additional fixed cost fee with the advisor. We haven't seen that program. It costs five dollars per employee per month. That we haven't seen any return on that program. That was something that they were going to continue. And looking at your seven dollar administrative, that's almost your entire chain rate there. So it made, made sense to look at it.
Oh, that's a good point. Yeah. Yeah. The well visor fee was something that we couldn't decline either, and it provided no value to the county. I think we were able to get it waived that first year, and then last year they applied it.
Yeah. And the, the way that it works as well is you see different carriers that are going to be more competitive in the market during some years, and then other times they're going to have harder rates. And a lot of times they're coming in with higher funding in their pockets. When we're talking about the Gerber life, it is the, the big Gerber life companies that we're talking about, we also work with. You see Liberty Mutual has their own reinsurance, Google, these large companies that are looking for the data, but they also have large pockets, and they can be more competitive in some years and then turn around and hand large increases out because they have the information. So they are always changing. We shop to over thirty stop-loss markets to ensure that we're covering as covering the market and making sure we're placing with the best option. Now, and we'll get into this, we only did have three carriers that provided a quote because your rates are so competitive, the other markets came back and said they, they couldn't touch them at this point, so they declined to quote. So we have you in a good position, being able to make a lateral change without losing anything. And these are changes that employees aren't going to know or be impacted. So that's also a, a reason we like to be able to have this conversation. We shop the stop-loss each year.
Thanks, Trey.
All very good questions, though. Okay, so then on the annual health plan summary is kind of tying it all together because we've gone through the fixed cost component with the stop-loss premiums, administrative fees, which are stable and only very based on that enrollment of a hundred and eighty-three employees. And so you'll see that total again, six fifty, six hundred and fifty-five thousand compared to the seven hundred and seventy-five. So you'll see the eighteen percent increase in that category. And then you look at the maximum claim cost because that's where you would no longer pay claims. As Trey said, whether it was, you know, everybody in the group fell under the ninety thousand and you met their mark of maximum paid claims, or you're getting specific reimbursements, that is your maximum claim payments. So when you add those two categories together, you come up with the total maximum planned cost. So four point eight compared to five point four. So the total increase is six hundred and four thousand if the plan went to maximum claims, which is also highly unlikely. For the first time in fourteen years, I had a group reach their aggregate stop-loss. So the likeliness of reaching max claims is very low. But you will fall somewhere between expected and max. So that's where it averages out to the twelve point four increase to the plan for the year. All right. So just moving into a couple of plan changes, as we've talked about in years previous, the IRS manages HSA accounts by setting minimum deductibles for qualified health plans. So currently, the deductible for a single is three thousand three hundred. And for a family, actually, I've got a typo there. It should be six thousand six hundred. And it's going to be moving up to thirty-four hundred and sixty-eight hundred on January one to maintain HSA compliance. That is just the minimum deductible that the plan has to carry. The county is currently contributing three thousand two hundred and forty to each employee's health savings account every year.
Tiffany, what'd you say that typo was?
It should have been sixty-six hundred.
Sixty-six.
I apologize. I can look at these a million times and still miss some of them. All right. And then turning the page to optional plan changes, there's two changes that we wanted to cover. One of which I think Andrea has already talked with you a little bit about, and that's just some genetic testing if recommended by a healthcare professional based on family history and risk for the BRCA gene, which is for genetic breast cancer, and then Lynch syndrome, which is for colon cancer. By providing access to those genetic testings, you could help identify if someone was at risk much earlier and allow for more of a proactive approach to care, which can greatly reduce the cost to the county for the claims. So there's not an immediate cost for that one. It will just be based on what is recommended, and it will be based on a risk profile of the person. So it wouldn't allow for somebody just to walk into the doctor's office and ask for it. It would be after an evaluation of their, their doctor.
That doesn't create more lasered people on your side, does it, if genetic testing comes back?
No, no.
You do have our laser numbers.
No. But where it could help is if you identified a woman with the BRCA gene and she prophylactically took, had a double mastectomy to reduce the risk of breast cancer. That cost to do that would be much less than if she had been diagnosed with breast cancer and then had to go through all the treatment. So it's just that proactive approach to it.
A diagnosis would make them a laser.
And that's what I was gonna.
We have had that happen.
Yeah.
So we had it happen in two thousand and twenty-three. And he was lasered at two hundred and fifty thousand. And we were, we had to pay for all of it. He didn't.
Oh, that's great. Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. His total claims were two hundred thirty-three thousand five forty-seven twenty-two that were all at, on our.
They're pretty good at picking those numbers, aren't they?
Huh?
They're pretty good at picking those numbers.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we would recommend to add that to the plan as a covered service for the members. And then just as we've talked about in the past, I have to bring up the fan favorite of the gender reassignment coverage. This is just adding it to the plan document to comply with the Mental Health Parity Act and all of the other regulatory bodies supporting this. So I've listed some resources there down below, and it's still something we'll continue to recommend and bring to the table annually as a recommended plan change. Okay. And then something else that Andrea and I have spoken about, and it didn't make it into here, is the cochlear implants, which are the implanted hearing aids. There is a wave in an ink, a new surge of those being included in employer health plans, as well as more coverage for hearing devices, because those are somewhat like the black hole of the health industry. There's no policy that covers them. There is, and they're very costly. And obviously, hearing is a very important thing that we all, we all need. So we also wanted to maybe explore what, what it could look like to add the cochlear implants to the plan as well. And again, there's not anybody that we know of that needs the services now. It's just kind of some of the trends that we're seeing in increased benefits to employees that are valuable and important for something that's needed daily. Any questions on the, the plan changes? Okay.
Tiffany, are you seeing a lot of liability risk or exposure for people that aren't choosing the gender reassignment coverage?
We don't Wyoming, but I think that that makes sense. I think it's more prevalent elsewhere. But I do think it's something to still be concerned about. Just because you never know within your employee body if there might be somebody themselves, or maybe one of their children, or somebody that is, you know, battling that in life, and it's just hard to know. And I think there are national cases. It's just not as prevalent Wyoming. But the Mental Health Parity Act is increasingly gained more momentum, and it continues to. And the Mental Health Parity Act is basically just a law that requires that a health plan treat mental health disorders and needs the same as physical. And so gender dysphoria has been recognized as a psych, a psychological diagnosis now. So therefore, it should be covered in a health plan just the same. Again, this is just language that's going to be included in the plan document. It's not anything that we expect to have a claim or see a claim on, but it would protect the county if someone ever came forward and felt that they were being discriminated against because it wasn't included in the plan and that they had been diagnosed with gender dysphoria.
What we're seeing in the nation is more of just the lawsuits that are coming up against health plans that potentially don't cover and then are being questioned by those members that feel discriminated. So that's the, by adding, you're protecting against that.
Are those lawsuits, are you seeing them, or they're brought on by an organization, or they're brought on by individuals?
It's hard to tell between those because you do have the first ones that may have been an individual, and then you have ambulance chasers that are organizations looking to exploit. And it's also something that almost once that can's opened, it's, it's tough to put back in.
And I think as it's gained momentum, a lot more providers are aware of it too. So if they're treating somebody with gender dysphoria, and there's recommendations on their treatment, and they look into the health plan, and they see that it's not covered, and they know that it should be covered based on the Mental Health Parity Act, it could be even suggestive at that point to the patient that your plan should cover this. And then where it goes from there, whether it's a national organization supporting this person, or they're acting on their own volition, they may take action against the health plan in the county in order to get what they feel like they should be covered for. And again, this is something that's not going to be listed in coverage summaries that employees receive. You have a really big policy document. It's a plan document. It goes through every possible coverage and procedure that someone could have, and it would be put there. So it's, it's not something that's going to be front-facing to the employees or something that's going to be listed anywhere. It would just be for somewhat liability purposes. And at this point, I believe even all of the other counties, I coordinate with another consultant and broker on the other eastern side of the state, and all, I know all of the groups she works with have added it. Not really willingly, but have added it just out of liability. So I would say that even though it may be against, you know, the feelings of the board and what you guys represent, and I can understand that, that overall, it's just about protecting the county from a larger lawsuit. And I think that's the way those counties and government agencies around the state have viewed it at this point.
The cost for these add-ons in here somewhere? Yeah.
There's no cost for the add-ons at this point. The only cost would come if someone had the genetic testing, and it would just flow through as a claim. I think on average, that would run somewhere from like, what, eight hundred to twelve hundred dollars per test, something like that. So it's, it's not an excessive cost. And then the gender reassignment could very well depend on the person and what they needed, but there's no actual cost to adding it to the plan.
But the hearing aid stuff would potentially add cost to it?
The cochlear implants could, yes. And I think that.
The fixed cost, right? Not just what could happen down the, the road with employees, right?
Correct. It'd be a fixed claim cost. So I think cochlear implants, when I looked it up, I think the average on it was like seventy-five hundred to, I want to say seventeen thousand, depending on a few factors. And the cochlear implants are the ones that are actually embedded in in your skull. Yeah.
Your stop-loss numbers won't change for adding any of these programs.
Yeah.
But that one will be the only one that potentially could raise up on the fixed cost and administrate it?
I think there was a misunderstanding there. She's saying a fixed claims cost.
Oh, sorry.
But it would just come through in claims, not, it wouldn't change any of these.
Just change the end result on the claims potential that come through, but it wouldn't change any of the fixed costs up, up ahead to seven hundred thousand, right?
Correct. And I, I apologize. I just misstated that in the way that usually, once those are placed, it, that's it. You know, the procedure is completed, and that's, that claims cost, and there's not ongoing cost typically. Any other thoughts or questions on the plan changes? Okay. All right. In terms of looking at the, the renewal and the strategic moves that can be made to help align the county with the best stop-loss carrier at the best rate, we would recommend the move to the alternative market carrier with standard life. I think they're also more encompassing of some of the unique policies that you have in place with how you cover individuals and your structure. So I think that that's also attractive. Ad elects RX international sourcing. I know that that's something that you've talked to Andrea about, but we're finding significant savings in that with our other clients, and that is just sourcing high-cost drugs from other tier-one countries like Canada or New Zealand, and having those shipped straight to members' homes. And then the county pays the international sourcing cost of those. So I don't know, Trey, if you want to add anything else in on that.
Yeah. So there's a lot of attention right now in the media about the pharmacy costs. It really is seeing that it is cheaper for individuals in some cases to go to other case, other countries, pick up their medications and fly back, including costs, including stays for that travel are still significantly lower than what we're seeing here inside the United States. We are seeing a straight-up pressure to lower those pharmacy costs. And with also the threats of bringing in other outside international sources to do that, we're seeing that in states like Florida. They have now opened it up to allow group health plans to purchase all of their medications through international sources. What we're talking about is on an individual basis, on specialty medications, sourcing those medications from outside of the country. They come in the same, they're the same manufacturers, same pills, same boxes, everything on a mail order, which is why a lot of those services, it's just a difference in where that starting point is. And because of that, we're not dealing with the games that are done with those pharmacy providers here in the United States. We can get those at significantly lower cost without impacting members. They're still getting their same medications.
Absolutely. I have an example. Just yesterday, in working with another client, we have a member taking a oral chemotherapy drug for a lifetime blood cancer diagnosis. And the cost in the United States was sixteen thousand a month for that drug in December. The cost increased to twenty thousand dollars a month for no reason at the start of the year. If we source that through Canada, it's fifteen thousand. So I mean, it's still expensive, but five thousand dollars a month. I mean, that's sixty thousand dollars a year for one drug. So when you start looking at that throughout the group and all the different medications, because this could be anything high-end like cancer drug to even just insulin, blood thinners, other more maintenance medications employees take. So it's able, it allows the plan to take significant cost reductions as a whole, the more that we start. more that we start sourcing all those drugs. And the best thing to the employees is they get it shipped directly to their house and there's no cost to them. And then the county just reaps the rewards of saving the money on the the same drugs.
Because the costs are so much lower of sourcing them through there, we're able to offset the cost, the employee, and allow them to obtain their medications at no cost to them.
So everybody wins. But it's it's just crazy to see some of the drug costs now, and they're just going up for no reason for randomly. So it's it's hard to, it's hard to even say with what costs we're seeing now, how much those will adjust, or based on, like what Trey said, with the current administration, what they're working towards in terms of controlling the pharmacy industry. We hope to see some, you know, some long-term effects of that, but right now, this is a way the county can start saving on the same drugs being purchased through the plan immediately.
Does our, does our plan include any of the, I forget what it is, I think it's the, like the Govee's, the Ozempic's? Yeah, weight loss, what is it?
The GLP-1s.
Yeah. Does it include any of the GLP-1s?
It it does, but the diagnosis of diabetes is required.
Has to be still diabetic.
So it would, some of the the drugs are kind of used for different purposes. And so like the Ozempic would be specifically for diabetes. I think we'll go via specifically your work for like weight loss and other things. So it kind of just depends on which drug out of the two classes that they're taking, but your plan requires the diagnosis of diabetes. And and that's standard also amongst the industry. So please let us know if you have any additional questions on the ElectRx. That would be something that would be deployed January 1, not September 1, with the stop-loss policy renewal. So that would allow us adequate time to circulate the information to employees, help them understand the process and the benefits to them during open enrollment. So we'd make that a key focal point during open enrollment because it is a voluntary program from the employees. So we want to, we want to help get that information in front of them and help guide them to the next steps of filling through the international sourcing. So we would recommend adopting the plan changes to help reduce future risk by identifying, you know, genetic cancers early, the risk for genetic cancer early, as well as protecting the plan against compliance concerns. And then just continue looking for ways that we can enhance the policy and look for additional cost savings to reduce the county's spend over time. Great. So that moves us to the final recommendations and action items. So we would recommend accepting the renewal offer from the alternative market, moving to standard life effective September 1. Add the ElectRx international sourcing. Adopt the required plan changes for the deductible increase through the IRS, and then consider the additional recommended plan enhancements for the gene testing, the gender reassignment, and the cochlear implants.
So I have a question now.
Yes.
So on that add elect international sourcing, is that adding, not eliminating what we're doing now with, you know, prescriptions, just trying to get on this if we can? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. It would enhance their options. They would still be able to fill through a retail pharmacy or their mail-order pharmacy if they chose to, but they would still be responsible for deductibles. Or they could voluntarily participate in the ElectRx program, get signed up, get the the mail order set up through the the other out-of-country pharmacy, but the benefit would be that they do have their deductible and out-of-employee responsibilities waived. So it's just adding on top of, but there's no fee directly to add it.
It's not such a headache in this country, and going to another country, I can't imagine.
So you have a, when you sign up for the ElectRx, what it is, is you're calling a phone number and they're signing you up just to get your mail order. So like the issues that you're talking about with getting medication sourced and mailed to your door, that's what the same program is doing, but you actually have an individual that's walking you through that process and signing you up.
That ain't gonna happen. I mean, you know, it takes forever to get to those, and then, you know, then they, you take all the information and they give you another person, you got to give them the same information over, you know? I mean, it's just, it's a headache, you know? And I mean, it's just another one you'd have to go through if you're dealing with two different ones, is what I'm wondering, you know?
I got you.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. No, I see what you're saying. And so I think those headaches are going to be very, very minimal because they're, you're going through that process. It's not a big change of what the employee's already going through. So it's actually adding an individual that's going to walk them through that process.
And once they complete the process, they'll get the prior authorization from the provider that will be on file with the pharmacy. And so once it's set up, it would routinely just mail them the prescription. It wouldn't be an ongoing requirement for the employee to connect with ElectRx and sort it out. So typically, those prior authorizations for most medications last a year. So it may be a once-a-year thing, but that would be kind of the standard process that they go through now.
They probably on not a lot of medications, are you?
No.
Just wait. Because it just, you know, they get you on ninety days and you got down to forty-five. I mean, you know, it's just, it sounds simple, but you know, it, I just don't, you know, it's bad enough now. I mean, I understand where you're going from and like it to to get to, but it's just, stay healthy.
Yeah.
Okay.
And don't eat some of that chocolate cake we had back there.
Reduce stress on your time at the job.
I mean, I, I mean, it's just, I mean, it's, it's, it's a nightmare that you just can't imagine.
And honestly, I I've been very involved in some things. The reason I know all those costs for that many cancer medications is because I'm actively participating in the process with the the member, and it's, it's been challenging. And it's challenging to see what they go through. It's challenging to see, you know, how their employer's trying to find ways to offset the cost because that employer's not very big. So you know, a twenty thousand dollar price tag on one employee is pretty hefty. So it's, it's a lot. So whereas we know it will be a change, there is good support through, Novo has a team, we're happy to help, ElectRx would have a team. The true benefit to the employees, like if you have a three thousand four hundred dollar deductible next year and their medication will definitely get them to that point, that would be the advantage to the employee is saying, if I go through ElectRx and I just have my medication coming from Canada straight to my door, I don't have to pay that thirty-four hundred dollars for my medication. So that's kind of the incentive that will hopefully help encourage the employee to take those steps. And that's where we'll have to educate them to say, hey, you're going to get the same medication. You still may be getting it on mail order now, but you're just going to get it from a different place. But the advantage to you is you're not going to spend that three thousand two hundred and forty, the county's giving you an HSA funding on your deductible. You get to put that in your account and hopefully just save it and, you know.
And I understand, like I say, but then, then you got a doctor involved, okay? Getting them to work with you out of the country. I mean, it just, there's just so many things that anymore, it's not, it's a headache, boy. I mean, as days you break out in a cold sweat, just trying to stand. It is.
You need another prescription before you hang up the phone.
I know, there's mornings I want to throw them on the trash and just shoot craps and see what happens. You know? Because, I don't know, it's-
The system overall is so complicated.
Oh, I know, I know. I just hope this doesn't add to it, you know? That's what I'm getting at, because it's just overwhelming.
What we're seeing is, once you get that part of it figured out, what we see is that without programs like this, you're going to continue to go through that same carousel. With this program specifically, and some of the other ones that we work with on pharmacy sides, when we get that piece done, where we make that change of where that provider's writing the script, then it's on a monthly basis, it's, or a ninety-day basis, and it's done shipped to their door, we're not having the same issues from the same authorities.
So we're happy to help where we can.
She's saying she'll do it for you, Dave. She's going to do all the work.
I need a secretary to do that.
It might take one to get all the, all the-
No, it does. It's just because you think you got it done, see? You know, and then like, say they'll go to, they'll hit down and they'll give you a thirty day supply when you wanted a ninety day, then you start all over, and then they get out of kilter and then, you know, you're calling, I mean.
The only last piece I want to add on this is we do use this program on, against your laser risk, so that those individuals that we're talking about with the additional hundred and sixty thousand dollars, we use this as a negotiation when we talk to the stop-loss carriers, when they see an individual. A lot of times, individuals can just be taking a high-cost medication that draws a laser on them. If we can bring in and say, show that this employee's going to be sourcing this medication through international and we get fifty percent savings, we can negotiate their total laser risk down from hundred thousand and they put it at a fifty thousand, which would be under your spec. So we use it on the stop-loss side as well.
There's a lot behind the veil of health insurance.
I'm going to bite my tongue.
Yeah. So we've covered a lot of information today. Any other questions, information we can provide you even following the meeting today that might be helpful?
So are you going to get to the second part down here or not?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Well, if there's nothing else today in terms of questions, the decisions requiring a motion today would be approving the renewal of moving to standard life through MLB RE, the MGU, effective September 1, 2025. Approving the addition of ElectRx international drug sourcing, which would be effective January 1, 2026. Number three, approving the plan deductible increase to meet the IRS regulations, also effective January 1, 26. And approving the additions of genetic testing, also effective January 1, 26. Number five, approving gender reassignment coverage be added to the plan effective January 1, 26. And I guess that we would add a sixth bullet if we were adding the cochlear implants as well, which would be the implanted hearing aids.
But what if you don't like one of the five, one of the five? We, I just have a real issue with number five, telling you.
We went through the same thing last year. So this one, you're saying this year, no cost. Is that what you said on number five? No added cost?
Correct. There's no added cost.
So there's a policy that'll be kind of mandatory the next time?
It, once it is included in the plan document, it would continue to roll over every year up until you removed it.
But it might have a cost to twenty-seven.
Not necessarily. There would only be a cost if there was ever a gender reassignment claim. So this is just covering your liability. If someone wanted this, was diagnosed with gender dysphoria and been recommended to have the procedure, that your plan covered it, the likeliness of that is still pretty slim.
So last year, it seemed like you said, what, twenty percent put it on there, and a lot did, right? When we talked about this one last year? You had a percentage, I remember, once you-
I thought you said we were the only ones that had-
I, I think that out of all of the government agencies we work with in Wyoming, Subot County is the only one that hasn't added it. But I, there is no direct cost for adding it now or in the future. It's just minimizing the liability of a lawsuit, which could be much more expensive than the surgery would be if that ever came to being a claim, or there could never be a claim and it's just included in the plan document as being a covered service.
Well, don't you think that person who wants to make the change from one to the other ought to have the responsibility of saying, does my insurance cover it? And before they do it? I mean, once in a while, the guy that, or gal, that's going to do it, has to pony up and say, huh, maybe I have a little responsibility here. You know, I, I think, this is just me, and I'll go along with what these guys think because it'll be in the best interest of the folks who work for this county, but you know, sometimes you look at this and it just, there's just something about the way or what you were born should stay intact until you die, then doesn't make any difference. These people that go out there and make the switch from one to the other, my goodness gracious, I can't imagine what goes through their minds. And I don't know why we should pay for it, quite frankly. I think if they want to do it on their own, fine, go do it. That's, that's your call. But why should we, why should we be sitting here and say, oh, yeah, we approve it, go ahead and do it? You're saying it doesn't cost anything. There's nothing in today's world that doesn't cost something. I don't care what it is. It costs to drink that water out there. There's a cost associated with everything. Maybe it's not very much, but just the fact that it's on there and it's coming from the county, I don't care if we are, and I'm speaking for me, there's four, there's, well, three today, that will probably say, we're going to do it anyway, but it's I ju, I just can't get through it. Sorry, I just, and I don't think that we should have our health set up to say, yeah, go ahead, if you want to be a guy or a gal or whatever, just switch around, we're going to take care of it some way because it's right here in the insurance policy. And it is going to cost something. It's not going to cost nothing. Nothing does. So I just don't like it. I'm sorry. But I'll support, you know, if you guys want to go with it, I'll support it.
At the end of the day, number four, future cost is going to drive our cost, so we will come out of there with more laser candidates. And granted that maybe it's going to save their life, I won't take that away, but at the end of the day, I can see these insurance companies saying, well, now you've got five cancer carriers that we didn't know about, and so now you've got five more laser people to put on our list. And this is just a big step for the carrier. It doesn't do anything for us.
I definitely get what you're saying. What we're, we're talking about is just trying to put in those, preventing, when you're talking about preventing something in stage one versus stage four, what that does, cost-wise and weight-wise. So those, when we're talking about that additions, there is that fear, though, of it being more utilization based on that that's being out there. I don't think, because of the requirements to get those tests done in the doctor's office, it's not something that's going to be opening the floodgates, but something we recommend having them access. And us here is, our job is to bring those up, working on your behalf, to go to the stop-loss and insurance carriers and make sure that the costs are equivalent with the risk piece of things. So those are definitely pieces that we're reviewing, and those portions specifically are for past situations that we've had and ask for employees.
Trey, how many people use that? Do a lot of, a lot of people in Wyoming have that genetic testing available to their employees? And then second part of that question is, do you guys use that as that reverse negotiation to saying, hey, look, we're offering this to our employees, so we're going to save you money by being able to attack something in stage one rather than waiting until stage three, stage four?
Yeah. The, all the programs that we bring in, we're doing the negotiation with the stop-loss carriers, the stop-loss side of it. Your four point five million and expected cost and five point four million is your largest budget item. It's usually, with all of even the private employers that we work with, usually health budgets, the number two life expense item on their, on their list there. So we do see that in public and private. We are seeing more employers that are adopting this based on needs that are coming out. We are seeing even on the medication sides, medications that weren't available five years to treat ago, that are out there to treat diseases that weren't out five years ago. It's advancing in technology that we're looking at. That's also a part of the reason when we see a twelve percent increase overall in your stop-loss risk, average trend in the healthcare industry is anywhere on good years, it's eight percent. What we're seeing right now with the advancements in the technology and things like genetic testing, all of those that come into consideration, you're in the low double digits, so you're right on track with what the trend is for, for average. Now, it's different than inflation. Inflation average, we know that's on our goods. Medical inflation is a different number that we do see that's often higher. If an individual breaks their arm this year, we know on average, it's going to cost eight percent or higher to have the same broken arm. So to answer your question, about half, I would say, of our employers are adding these on, more as they're becoming aware of it or are doing the additions of it. And then, yes, we are going back and negotiating. And then, yes, we are going back and negotiating all of those pieces with the stop loss carriers.
Has it helped in those negotiations on the people that have participated in it?
It does. When we're doing a negotiation and individuals going, they're looking at lasering an individual, they're gonna have every claim history that that individual has gone in and had every health episode with nurse notes that all of that goes into consideration to peg a number for what they're lasered at, as you mentioned. We previously had them at a hundred, two hundred and thirty thousand, they came in at two hundred and fifty thousand. They're pretty good at judging what they're gonna be expected for that total lasered risk. They bring in all of the outside situations. It's also our job to bring the case notes to them to negotiate either conditional lasers or waiving of lasers when we have that option.
So when you have only two companies bidding on these things, there can't be much negotiating going on. You're kind of at their mercy.
So the, so yeah, we did have three, and so you're absolutely right. And it's the one carrier, and that's the reason that we stayed with UME in, in past years. Now, the other option you do have as a, you're a self-funded employer. We also do look at fully insured and level funded, they're different risk transfers. So that would be things like, instead of doing a fixed cost in the claims, a fully insured carrier covers all the costs. They're much higher, you're paying to not have that risk burden. That's also areas that we do look at each year, we explore fully insured markets, they also decline to quote on yours. So it is very risk, not adverse, I guess, because we are dealing with only a certain number of carriers that are bidding. But then from that point, we're working with the ones that are to get them down to sharpen their pencils the most they're willing to do.
I'm curious, sorry Tiffany.
And I was gonna say additionally, an underwriter reviews your plan document before setting your rate. So the more benefits they see for wellness, prevention, proactive measures, they're going to basically provide you a better rating, because they know you're trying to get on top of things early and address them early. So they might already have ta, reduce their rating, knowing that you're testing for that genetic breast cancer early, so that if you did find somebody with that gene, they're going to proactively have the mastectomy. They may, may never develop cancer. And they may never see that big claim, but if you don't have the genetic testing, they would find it much more likely that that big cancer claim could come because you never had eyes on it. If that makes sense. So they go through your plan document, they go through all your policy, like how you have people separated into classes, when you offer them coverage, how long they can stay on coverage, how long they have to wait for coverage. So they factor in all of the different things about how you offer your employees benefits. And then also, what are you covering? So the more wellness and prevention and proactive approach you can show the underwriter, the more solid they feel on providing you a good rate. But if people can't go in and get testing that would help identify these things, they're no, they know they're gonna go to a three, a stage three or four diagnosis state before, you know, they start receiving treatment, which is a significantly higher cost. So I think it's hard because you can't put an exact number on it, because you may not have seen the reduction that they took into account when they first rated it as well.
That makes sense.
Do you have questions?
Yeah, so when you're, when you're getting those quotes, did you say that if we was ever to move from self insured to fully insured, was there a number that we could take and say, you know, let's, let's compare them? Did anybody quote you any kind of number where we could compare?
The fully insured didn't provide them because your rates are competitive. And so the reason that you do a self funding is you're taking part of the risk on as acting as your own insurance company. When those claims come in under that expected and the max cost, your fully insured rates are gonna be taking based on that max cost. So they're expecting your claim to run at the top plus your fixed costs. When you're self-funded, if your plans come in below that at all, you're building to your reserve, which we've seen in the past. And this year would be another year that we're adding to that reserve. Other reasons that changes, there are differences between a self-funded and a fully insured. A fully insured is gonna tell you exactly what is covered. You don't have the ability to make any changes to that plan or tailor it to your, your employees' needs, your cultural fit. So you're more locked into what is covered, you don't have options. And then the other piece of it is, we're here talking about how to bring programs and additional programs in for your employees to help keep costs low, because they are your dollars that are going towards the employees' costs of healthcare and then hopefully being able to save the almost when being self-funded, when you're fully insured, when they're handing payers, not a reason for them to keep claims low, because they can hand out increases that continue to go compound each year. And they show that because healthcare costs are going up, their costs are gonna continue to go up.
And additionally, they don't provide any data or support to rate increases or plan utilization. So at the end of the day, on a fully insured plan, they bill you an amount per month per employee, you pay it. But you don't know if they use your money for claims, you don't know if you're under or over what they estimated. And you also know, have no insight to anything going on. So one of the advantages to self funding is you get to see all of the claims data. So, for example, we had a very large claimant recently that we were aware of and able to work on transitioning that person to avoid the risk on the plan for the renewal. Fully insured, you don't get a peek behind the veil. So basically, that's what's interesting about what you're seeing. It's like you're pulling the veil back and you're seeing all the financial mechanisms. When you're fully insured, they close that curtain, they say, here's your rate. And you pay that every month and that's much, it's much simpler. And it's easier to understand, because you're not, you know, looking at all of the different numbers and components and all the movement. But at the end of the day, you have no insight into your costs, what's coming, control the add additional programs. And I have a fully insured plan that's getting a thirty five percent rate increase right now and they have no idea why. And I don't have any idea why, much smaller organization, but that's, that's kind of a tough feeling. At least at this point, if you guys are having an increase, we can talk to it, we can talk about specific situations and also solutions that we can bring to the table that can help offset those costs.
Oh, so that's great information. So if I was to, if I heard that properly, correctly, so they would take basically what our maximum claims could be, so that four point seven, then they'd add in the fixed cost, and then they would add in whatever they're administering, fees on top of that, close the veil. And so, okay, and so what we're doing is by, by doing that, we're accepting some of that risk for potential reward on that being a variable cost, you know? Like this year, we're tracking closer to what they expect it is instead of the maximum, right? So we go to save that differential.
Yep, so we're budgeting towards the max, the difference there is going towards reserves to help offset employee portions or the county's portions.
I think another important acknowledgement to your plan is it is a grandfathered self-funded plan, which gives you the most control. So, you know, in terms of approving number five, that would already be included in a fully insured plan. You have no choice. That plan document, that policy document comes to you already set and you don't get to control it. Because that's how they can provide you a rate, is they know what it covers, they control what it covers, and you have no choice. But a grandfathered health plan was prior to the ACA. And so basically, you have operated the plan within the requirements to maintain that status, which is giving you the most control over the years to add and remove benefits as you see fit. Whereas all other plans, especially in the fully insured market, are standard. And so then therefore, the more that's included in them, the more that they cost. So all in all, in the fully insured market, premiums are definitely higher and you just don't have any, any understanding of where the numbers come from.
So Tiffany, on bullet point number five, where you say that falls under what, what act was it?
The Mental Health Parity Act.
So the Mental Health Parity Act. Does that act allow anybody to go after the carrier too, should a individual policy holder opt out of it? Does that protect the, any of the carriers or the underwriters?
No, they wouldn't have any liability in it, because the county essentially, being a self-funded plan, is the insurance company. Because you dictate what the policy covers.
And then we just have a stop loss on top of that that says, okay, you're, you're insuring your own employees, but if you spend this much money, we'll take over from here out.
Exactly, exactly.
And the contract is between the employees and the county, so that's the.
Okay, so I got one more dumb question. So you guys have done a really good job here presenting this, telling us what it will cover. But I want to know what it won't cover, more specifically. Big items, what, 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 what won't it cover?
There's a pretty good list of exclusions in the plan document. Typically, it's not gonna cover any healthcare costs related to military service or war, any optional procedures for cosmetic procedures, any injuries or illnesses sustained breaking the law. So if you were, you know, driving your car drunk and you wrapped your car around a telephone pole and ended up with all kinds of health issues, that would not be covered if you had been cited for DUI. Gosh, those are the big things. There's a whole list of them, but they're, they're pretty much just anything that's not medically necessary, essentially, or optional.
In a car wreck and they prove you're speeding. You're out of luck, come.
No, not necessarily, because you're speeding. Typically, drugs and alcohol use is more specifically what I should note on that. I don't know, Trey, can you think of to get the other really big exclusion?
Those are the big ones that you're gonna run into the most. And then in that plan document, it's gonna say, like in a car accident, it's gonna list out whose coverage hits first. So it's gonna be the auto insurance paying first and then any of the medical, how those are all worked out. So it's, those are gonna be your main ones are cosmetic. If individuals are outside of the country and injured, a lot of times you'll see that that's not covered the same as an individual here that happens here inside the United States, those are the big pieces.
Okay, so so gender reassignment doesn't come under cosmetic changes?
Not with the diagnosis that are currently being utilized, it's more of a mental health discussion on that.
It, it previously was included as that in the exclusions, but as the mental health parity has gained momentum, there is a firm that we had evaluate all of our self-funded health plans, essentially go through the policy, look for any places that could create liability for the organization. And this was one that was heavily addressed in all of them, and therefore that's why all the clients have made the decision to add it is because there is a significant liability. But it's because of the psychiatric diagnosis of gender dysphoria, that it becomes a psychiatric condition, which is mental health. And then therefore, the recommendations for the gender reassignment falling under that are not cosmetic, but mental health related.
So are you wanting to answer this today? Is that what you're here for?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, so do we do these as a, all as one, or we go through one individually? What do you think we ought to do here today?
Clayton, I think we can do it all as one, can't we? So Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve the renewal of the stop loss to standard life. And add all the recommendations as presented today, including cochlear implants.
Second.
I'll say it.
Motion made, second, any more discussion? Done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I was conditioned that I'm not too in favor of that number five, but I've already made a statement, I'm gonna support, which I will.
I'm in your club. So, in a nays, so S four zero one absent. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chairman.
Trey, thank you. Great presentation.
It was great, great presentation.
You'll screen that call, I can see it.
No, no, I, I have to take these calls as part of my job, but honestly, that's.
I was gonna show you what frustration you go through. Just for one example, let's say there's at Auburn, and so you just had one, and I bet there's eleven texts on the same thing. Just, that's what you deal with, see? You know, you just don't, you know, you can't find somebody. And you finally, it's, it's very, very frustrating. Yeah, take a break, take a break. So, you know, and it's gotten worse, see, you know?
David, are you under the county's plan?
Yeah.
Thank you. I don't typically bring a person, but then I have good pockets.
I think there's seven. Motion to approve the following alcohol sales permits. Boulder Storm Pub for Rondo Rodeo. Boulder Storm Pub for the Chamber Mixer at the rodeo grounds. Boulder Storm Pub for the Seblot County Fair. Boulder Porn Store and Pub for the Walden Campbell wedding. Boulder Storm Pub for the McLaughlin wedding. Nights at Columbus. Nights at Columbus Rodeo Beer Sales at the rodeo grounds. Country Lane Liquors. For private events. So we have a motion to approve these?
Would you mind repeating those again? Thank you. I second it.
Any special on that? Your own favorite? Four zero one H. Okay.
Dave, you get assigned every one of them.
I do?
Yeah.
Get paid overtime. What about the sister, does she have anything?
Leila said that she did not have any.
And?
And then there's one bond. Then getting right quick. And here's.
I have a motion to approve the bond for Frederick Thaler. Hobart Grant's Service Improvement District. So I have a motion to accept that.
Second.
Your own favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's only one, yeah.
Hey, so is there any? Old business out there anywhere? Any?
I have none.
Comment on? Anything, say anything up there? Anybody wanna say something?
I would know if they did, but I think the little hand.
I think it raises and turns yellow, I think. Alright, so nothing else, I guess, for general.
General.
Thank you. What do you want?